What's up? He'll probably watch it on the computer. He's a curious fellow.
I'd like to call the council meeting to order and request that our city recorder, Claudia Sisneros, do a roll call.
Counselor Peralta. Counselor Payne.
Present.
Counselor Minkie.
Present.
Counselor Geary.
Good evening.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Yep.
Counselor President Garvin.
Here.
And Inner Mayor Dropkin.
Here. And I would like to call on Counselor Kelly Minkie to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Recording in progress.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Counselor Minkie. Tonight we'll be going into comments from community members. We did have a few people sign up to testify on the Three Mile Lane area plan that is on our agenda tonight. However, we did close that public hearing and I apologize, but the opportunity to submit public comment on that specific item has closed. Any interested audience members that would like to provide a comment tonight are welcome to do so. And any comment provided that requires some sort of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing today or at some future date, or as aforementioned, the closed public hearing of the Three Mile Lane area plan. Comments this evening will be limited to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. If you wish to speak, please use the raise your hand feature if you are in Zoom in order to request to speak. And once you, once your turn is up, we will announce your name and unmute your mic. You may also send a chat directly to our city recorder, Claudia Sisneros. If you are here in the audience, you may fill out a form and take it to our city recorder, Claudia Sisneros, who's over here and has a name tag to identify her in front. And similarly, if there's anybody on the phone, please indicate that you would like to speak and we will unmute you when the time is right. We are going to start this evening with advice and information items, and starting with reports from councilors on committee and board assignments. And Counselor Gary, will you start us this evening, please?
We actually do have someone that signed up for just...
Oh, my gosh. We're going to take comments from the public, except I'm going to skip right over the part where we take the public comment. I apologize. Wonderful. I'm very glad we have people signed up to testify this night and pardon me for moving too quickly. Yeah, so Claudia, please.
We'll start with Dan Hilbert.
Dan, thank you. Please join us. If you'll come up here, state your name and address for the record and then we'll start your time. Thank you.
My name is Dan Hilbert. I live at 2420 Emery Street, Unit Number 40. On September 10th, I was viciously assaulted by a neighbor in our mobile park. He pushed and shoved me down and I received numerous deep lacerations on my knee, elbow, and wrist. I then called the police and Officer Hanson and Park arrived about 15 minutes later. I told them what had happened and they said they'd talk with that other person, which they did. Then they came back to me and said they weren't going to arrest him. Well, I was stunned. I mean, why would I call the police if I was in any way responsible or guilty? But they said they weren't going to arrest him because he told them a different story. So, he said, Officer Hanson said, "Well, if anybody's going to get arrested, you're going to get arrested." Me? I'm 80 years old. I'm partially blind. I just wanted the guy to quit gunning his motor when he went by my house. And in a fit of rage, he got out of his car and violently attacked me. Now, the reason I'm bringing this up at the city council is because I know Mr. Scales, who is the king of the police department here. He doesn't like to meet people. He drives by my house perhaps two, three times a month. Can't he spare five minutes? No. So, that's the reason I'm bringing this up. So, I believe that that person should be held responsible for the assault that he incurred on me. And that's, the owner of the mobile park has been after him for years to get him to conform to the rules and regulations of the park, but he refuses. If they would arrested this guy, that would have been it because he did assault me. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hilbert. And on behalf of the council, we're very sorry for the trauma that you endured. Do we have other members of the public in the gallery that would like to testify before the council this evening? Sir, I see you kind of raising your hand. Are you interested in testifying on something other than the Three Mile Lane area plan?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
We have no one else signed up.
Okay. And no one on Zoom or the phone? Okay.
We have Margaret Cross just raised her hand.
Thank you. Margaret Cross, would you care to testify, please?
Yes, I would. Thank you. My name is Margaret Cross, 1102 Southwest Russ Lane in McMinnville. Last week, I attended the Fire District meeting and I was struck by what a good meeting it was. The presentations by Councilman Garvin and the Fire Chief were short and factual, and the focus of the meeting was to listen to the many attendees that showed up right at dinner hour. They answered questions and they encouraged discussion. The meeting was recorded and there was really good participation. I really think we need more public meetings like this. Unfortunately, I've noticed a lot of changes in the public process over the past five years. Instead of conversations with the public, we are increasingly relying on consultant reports, online surveys, social media, and PowerPoint presentations. And even worse, important meetings have not been recorded. As a citizen, I find it very difficult to debate a survey or have a conversation with a PowerPoint slide or question a consultant's report or review nonexistent records. And I think that increasing use of these practices have damaged citizen participation. Vigorous, open, public debate, to me, is a core requirement for a healthy democratic process, along with maintenance of good public records. So, it's discouraging when there's no dialogue or feedback or when records are missing. And it's even more discouraging when factual errors or omissions continue to be repeated even after being reported by citizens. Recently, Mr. Blaydean pointed out that trust in the process, in his opinion, is at an all-time low. And if trust is to be restored, I think we need to follow the example set by the Fire District meeting. We need to start having conversations again. A community is really only as strong as its members, and so we need to do more to ensure that we are hearing directly from the public in a forum that promotes dialogue, not speeches. I hate giving three-minute speeches to you. I really do. I want conversation and feedback. And as a person who deeply cares about my community, I'm urging you to provide a better forum for public dialogue. Make sure that all committee meetings are recorded. That's essential. But most of all, I think you really need to follow the example set by the Fire District meeting. And I think you might even find it might make your job easier in setting priorities and making decisions.
Thank you, Margaret.
So, good luck with your discourse tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I will echo your commendations of Council President Garvin and the way that that meeting went. And that meeting was organized by the city along with partners. And we do as well hope that that will continue to be an example of the path that we are taking. And I agree, it was a great meeting and it's been a great resource for many people. Thank you for your comment this evening. Do we have any additional public comment?
None that I can see.
Is there anybody else on Zoom that would like to testify? Thank you. I will now go to reports from councilors on committees and board assignments, starting with Counselor Gary.
Thank you. The two I have to report on would be DEI. And we had a meeting last week and spent most of the time talking about the Public Engagement Charter and it's still in draft form and had some good feedback. And that should be coming back to the committee next month and then moving its way up as a good recommendation. So, that was a good dialogue and learning opportunity. And then we had a MIRAC meeting and spent most of the time talking about Alpine development and ways to spur that on or get feedback about what's going on for roadblocks to development. So, that's my update. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chenoweth.
Thank you, Ms... Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report. My meetings for this month are tomorrow, which got canceled. That's the MEVLC. And Parkway is Thursday.
Thank you. Counselor Peralta.
Thank you, Mayor. Council governments did not meet between the last meeting. Our meeting is next week. However, we did take meetings with Business Oregon still pushing for additional planning resources, Heather. Our ask is $1 million across the six COGS for this year and 1.5 for each of the next five years for planning services. Historic landmarks met earlier this month, approved, two changes to properties, and they're going to be looking at the big hotel this coming month.
Thank you. Counselor Payne?
Yes. The Landscape Review Committee met on August 31st and continued their review of the code changes to the landscape and tree codes. I had to duck out of that meeting early, so I'm not sure if they completed that, but they've been doing good work.
Thank you, Counselor Minkie.
This is the YCAP report for August 2022. In brief, the executive director is working to support the executive committee in identifying nominations for open board seats on the board. Three candidates have been provided. There are three positions. And the application and information on board service has been provided to them. We met today in executive council and are recommending all three to the board in October. Raise the Barn will be held September 29th at Abbey Road Farm from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock. Food will be provided and it should be a nice evening. There will be farm tours and it promises to be a fun evening. The Development Department completed grant requests for our new freezer and cooler equipment. We are now waiting word from donors. Youth Outreach received the Austin Family Foundation grant again this year. We are still waiting to hear the status of the request for Transitional Living Program. Development is working closely with Housing Stabilization on grants from OHA and OHCS, totaling more than $3 million for the Turnkey Program and Any Door Place, as well as four HUD annual applications, which are due on August 31st, 2022. As a small side, the revenue for the 2021-2022 fiscal year was $16 million. This is up from about $7 million two years ago. This will likely be the year-end with a small lot... Well, the year-end will actually show a small loss due to some timing things. For our revenue totals before the council were about $7 million per year, but revenue is expected to stay higher for the next few years because of various government programs. We are working on the fiscal 2022 year close in preparation for the next audit scheduled to begin October 24th. And Housing Stabilization, Built for Zero, they have active chronic clients of 119. Outflow of chronic clients in the past month or outflow of these clients is six. That's in July. And inflow of the clients for the past month is five. Chronic housing placement numbers this month were one. For veterans, the active chronic clients were 11. The outflow for July was one and the inflow is zero. On the Turnkey Program in July 2022, the Turnkey Program saw an increase in approvals on rental properties. There were six households approved with vouchers in place and are waiting inspections to complete the move-in process. There was also one more exit into a stable housing situation with all of these families soon to be on the move. This is looking to be one of the most successful months for the apartment hunting program the apartment hunting program has ever had. The YCAP housing specialists being moved to full-time and having more time to be able to look for places and utilize flex spending we are given for application fees made this possible. The positive response rate from the housing authority after having an assigned staff member in communication has created a smoother document gathering process for these units. I believe that's about it for now.
Thank you, Counselor. My report is fairly brief as well. The McMinnville Affordable Housing Commission did meet. We got a thorough YCAP report, which you've also just heard. Also, our local Habitat for Humanity is working on buyback for the first time ever because they have a family that's looking to purchase outside of the program. So, that's a unique endeavor and positive for them as well. And the Housing Authority of Yamhill County reports that they are now fully funded for the Stratus Village project and also starting some new rehabilitation programs in the city. And they also reported that each of their housing specialists has about 400 families on their client list. And then Encompass Yamhill Valley reported that they're currently serving about 64 people per day who are accessing their heating and cooling. They're also expanding their programming, bringing on five staff members, and looking to expand their services throughout the county. In addition to that, I would ask councilors to save the date. It's already been emailed out to you and in your calendar, but McMinnville will be hosting the City-City Dinner on November 10th, and it would be lovely to have the council in attendance as we host the other municipalities and government bodies in the county for what is sure to be a fun evening. And with that, we'll go to Department Head Reports. I'm sorry... Oh, my gosh. Sorry. It's a big agenda tonight, so pardon me for trying to get to the meat of the sandwich here. Counselor President Garvin, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, no YCOM meeting this week. We were supposed to meet today, but that got moved to next week for some scheduling conflicts. Tomorrow, Visit McMinnville meets. And then Airport Commission, we had a meeting Tuesday last week. Really, the only thing that came up in there of substance related to council stuff is there was some Airport Commission concern about light pole height in that Three Mile Lane corridor, but, you know, that'll probably be addressed by FAA stuff, but that's just something that the Airport Commission has concern on, so I just wanted to bring that up. And then Fire District, lots to talk about there. We had our meeting that Margaret mentioned on Tuesday last week. The Fire Chief Leifert, Hanafin, and Union President Todd Godfrey participated with me and well-attended, well-received, and I think overall gives us some positive momentum moving forward. From there, we had a county commission meeting on Thursday, some final tees that need crossed and dotted. And with that, we'll have a resolution coming before council on the 27th in two weeks. Pending that resolution, we're to pass that evening. It would go back to the county commissioners for hopefully one of their first meetings in October. And with that action, then it would be ready for the ballot through that avenue. The other avenue would be we'd need a chief petitioner and then we'd have to go out and gather signatures and we'd have to have those signatures in by the middle of November. So, it's important that we stay on track with that. If anybody has any questions, concerns with Fire District stuff, please reach out and let's have a conversation for anybody on the dais here or out in the community. And other than that, there's also going to be Fire Board seats in May. So, as you talk to citizens, if there's anybody interested, let them know that May will be an election cycle for the new Fire Board if the district passes. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager Jeff Towery.
Thank you, Mayor. A few items to report tonight. Reminder that next Monday, the 19th, will be HR Manager Vicki Hedges' first day on the job. Don't call her, please, on day one. We'll make sure we get her to that next council meeting to introduce her to you formally. I will be leaving for the ICMA Board Meeting and the ICMA Annual Conference on Thursday. I'll be out of town through the 21st. Chief Scales will be your local point of contact while I'm gone. I will have technology with me, although my schedule is pretty jammed up.
And could you just expand on that? Is that because you're being sworn in as the president of the International City Managers Association?
Yes, Mayor. That is one of the reasons, my...
Oh, well, congratulations, sir.
And the mayor will be doing an introduction, and I just can't wait to hear what she might say. We'll also have some other team members there. Jenny Berg, Jennifer Quayar, and former city attorney Amanda Guile-Hinman will be attending the conference. They submitted a proposal to present a panel presentation on our core services work that we did last year, was accepted. And so, they'll be at the conference making that presentation as well as attending as attendees. So, it'll be nice to have some additional friendly faces there as well. And that's all I have to report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Planning Director Richards.
Yes, good evening. I left in your... At your seats, we have two new pamphlets that were funded with a grant from the state, one called Uncover McMinnville. Uncover McMinnville, you've seen around town as posters, yard signs. We've had it out on social media. It's 30 different properties that we have put together specialized posters and images for and the history of those properties. These pamphlets are around town right now and it's also online, if you prefer to look at it online. And I also left some up here for people who are listening through the Three Mile Lane area plan, if you want a little distraction. And then we also had a how-to guide on historic preservation to help people who have historic properties understand where resources are for them in terms of preserving those. So, those are available and were funded through a grant and Noel, Maya, and Adam Tate finished that project up for us. I wanted to follow up on the Stratus Village discussion. I don't think people realize how big of a win that is for McMinnville. This is the largest, I think it's the largest housing authority project. It's 175 units that they got funding for. They have been trying to get funding for several years for it. They've even thought about reducing the size and going in phases, but they got full funding for the 175 units. So, that's huge for McMinnville in terms of bringing that type of product online. And I also wanted to share with you some of the work that council does that helps help make that happen. We learned about this time last year that there was an effort to look at the definitions of funding for projects like this in the community, in the state. They used to have an urban definition and a rural definition, and McMinnville qualified as urban, meaning that we were competing with Portland and Salem and Eugene for funds for projects and, you know, remarkably never won. And so, we, in 48 hours, turned around several letters of support to different people on the committee that was looking at this as for a proposal to establish a new classification called mid-urban for those communities like McMinnville that are not part of metropolitan region but are bigger than the rural communities. That mid-urban classification went forward and a lot of it's based on the support that came from McMinnville for that, and that's the reason why they feel they got the funding. So, those types of efforts behind the scenes are really impactful, and I don't think the community recognizes that that is also work that you're doing as elected officials. So, thank you for those efforts.
Thank you. Chief Scales?
No, I was just thinking. King. Joking, I'm joking. I was referred to King earlier. Real quickly, I'm sorry. Just let's...
Oh, King. Oh, sorry. There's only one of those these days, though.
So, real quickly...
That's not true either. That's a mistake. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm getting a little rummy today. Just to, so I don't have to get emails, I will tell you that this incident was reviewed, arrested. Didn't involve the two persons officers that you mentioned, but it was thoroughly investigated. So, no need to email me about stuff that was testified out earlier. Real quick, because I do know that we talk a lot about our hiring, where we're at with staffing. I had mentioned this to the executive team, doing a lot of internal stuff, moving right now. We have, still have seven vacancies, which is better than nine that we had two weeks ago. We've got two people that are lined up to start, we think, mid-October. We've got four others that are coming to administrative interviews with me in the coming weeks. I'd also share that we all maybe heard that Linda Gardner, our Support Services manager, she resigned to take a different position down in Lebanon, and that position's open. So, we are in the midst of a great deal of turnover, mix-up, but we're relatively confident that we're moving the needle on some things. So, to that end, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Leifert?
Thank you, Mayor. In addition to the work with the consolidation that we've been doing, we have a complete rewrite of the ambulance service area county plan for Yamhill that we're working with one consultant group. And we are participating in a complete rewrite of the Polk County Ambulance Service Area Plan with a different consultant group. So, our team is busy pulling a lot of data for two different consultant projects in an attempt to help rewrite both of those ambulance service area contracts. Yamhill County's has not been revised since 2004 and is sadly outdated. So, that's an important project. Countywide, on developing ambulance standards or improving ambulance standards and getting them, getting them to a position where we can better serve the citizens of the county of Yamhill. So, those are two of our major projects outside of that. We also are working with Mary Rowe today to get our fire marshal's position posted. Debbie McDermott has given us her notice of retirement effective December 1st. So, we will be aggressively advertising to try and find someone for the new, for the fire marshal's position for that role. And then, just a quick update, this last weekend, we deployed a... I told them not to do that. It's not budget time. I don't need the help today. We told, we deployed an engine twice down to Salem's fires this weekend, and we also sent a team up into Carlton and Gaston's area at the same time during some of that weather conditions that we had during the red flag. We also staffed up with volunteers and some off-duty career staff to ensure that we had resources available south here in town.
Thank you, Chief. And I will just add on that note that PGE in the state did a great job of offering briefings out to municipalities. I attended about five different briefings over the weekend, even though, of course, McMinnville's on its own independent... McMinnville's on its own independent electric and water systems. What happens in the region also affects what happens in the city, and it was a really admirable communication effort, very thorough, widely attended, and well-informed, and a very prepared response regionally, so it was great. And the last meeting, they also showed photographs of trees and other incidences where things did come down and come across power lines that could have started fires that were not started because those lines had been de-energized. Thank you for being part of that response unit, Chief. And to our Finance Director, Jennifer Quayar.
Good evening, everyone. So I just wanted to let folks know, following up from the work session about a month ago on ARPA, that we will be having our first kind of update on where we're at in the, we're going to use the city newsletter as the vehicle to give some new information on where we're at with different projects there. So that should be coming out in the next, I don't know, two to four weeks, that kind of timeline. Also, really pleased to be able to say that the renovation work that we've been undertaking at City Hall in the municipal court area, yay, is, it's not complete-complete, but all of the upstairs public space component of it is complete, and so we're working on a schedule for having the City Hall reopen to the public, so that should be coming quickly. And then, in terms of Budget Committee, so we're in the midst of receiving applications now for three open Budget Committee slots. I think I've got three or four applications at this point, so they're beginning to come in. If folks have any interest, or you want to get out to your networks, the due date is September 30th, so there's still a couple of weeks, and the applications are on the website, in the Commissions and Boards part of the city's website. And we were hoping that we might start a process of doing exit interviews with members of the Budget Committee, and we thought it was really appropriate to do it this cycle because of the extraordinary efforts that that group has been putting in over the last 15 months. So I was wondering if a member of council might be interested in volunteering to be a part of an exit interview process, so.
And if we have robust, then we'll need to limit it, but otherwise, one or two councillors. So we have Counselor Gary and Counselor Menke interested in being part of those exit interviews?
Okay.
Wonderful.
Super. Well, I'll circle back with the two of you, and we'll find time on the calendar to get together with folks who are coming off the committee.
Thank you.
Great. And then I just also want to let people know that we will be having our final audit testing for fiscal year 2022. It's the last week of September, first week of October, so we are pretty heads down right now in the Finance Department, just trying to put all of the, all of the final elements together that we need to produce for that process, so. So that's where we are in Finance and Municipal Courtland.
Thank you. Claudia Assistant News?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Our IT Director, Scott Burke?
Nothing to report tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I see we have Walt Gowell, interim City Attorney, on Zoom. Do you have anything to report this evening, sir? Well, we did have Walt Gowell on Zoom, I think we may have lost him. Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Library Director Berg is not here today, but I would like to make a note for people in the audience and who are listening at home, that this Thursday at 5:30, author Leah Sotilly, who covers extremism in the Pacific Northwest, is going to be giving a talk about her most recent book. It's going to be in the, you know, in the main room in the library at 5:30 on the 15th, so I'd encourage folks who are interested to come and join us.
Thank you. Everybody's received the May 2022 Cash Investment Report in your packet. Are the, is there any discussion? Okay, now moving on to our consent agenda. Does any member of council wish to have anything removed from the consent agenda? Counselor Chenoweth?
Yes, please. If you could please remove all of the minutes that are in there from the consent agenda so that I don't have to vote on those, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. So what we, yes. Okay, so we will remove items A, B, and C from the consent agenda, and I will entertain a motion to approve items D through F.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Menke and a second from Counselor Gary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, they say nay. The motion passes unanimously, and we will now consider the minutes of the December 3rd, 2020 City Council special called Urban Growth Boundary Amendment Public Meeting. I would ask for a motion to approve these, to approve the minutes.
So moved.
I have a motion from Counselor Peralta and a second from Counselor Gary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously.
I abstain.
I abstain.
Pardon me. The motion passes with a vote of four to zero with Counselor Chenoweth and Counselor Payne in absentia, and then we will consider the minutes of the December 8th, 2020 City Council Work Session and Regular Meeting. Does any counselor wish to abstain?
I do.
Me as well.
And I have two members of council abstaining. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the December 8th, 2020 meeting.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion from Council President Garvin and a second from Counselor Menke. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And all those opposed, nay. The motion passes four to zero with two abstentions, and we'll now consider the minutes of the December 16th, 2020 Council Work Session Meeting. Do, I would, I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Garvin and a second from Counselor Menke. Do any members of council wish to abstain?
Me first.
And I.
Yeah, abstention from Counselors Payne and Chenoweth. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And all those opposed, signify by saying nay. The motion passes four to zero with two members of council abstaining from the vote. We'll now deal with some old business. We'll start by considering, consideration of the Planning Commission recommendation to adopt the Three Mile Lane Area Plan as a supplemental document to the City of McMinnville Comprehensive Plan and Amending the Comprehensive Plan, Volume Two, Chapter Six, Transportation System, to add a proposal to amend the Comprehensive Plan map. I'll now call on our Planning Director, Heather Richards, to present.
Before I start, I wanted to again talk a little bit about the public process when it comes to our public hearings, because we have had people who have come in who wanted to provide comments during Citizen Comments. When we're in a land use process and we get into a public hearing process, it's very regulated in terms of the, how we conduct that process, and so when we close the public hearing, we are no longer accepting testimony. It's part of our regulations that we need to follow. We do have a more informal public process as these, as these recommendations are being formed years prior to them coming into the Planning Commission and City Council. And then I also wanted to talk a little bit about PowerPoints, so I'm going to share something I have never shared professionally, but I know I get a lot of interest in the PowerPoints that I provide, and many people don't realize I have a visual disability and can't see my written notes, so I use PowerPoints as a cue to be able to deliver information. So I apologize if some people struggle with that, but that's the way I'm able to do my job.
And you do it well.
Thank you. That was hard for me, I haven't done that in 25 years of this profession, so.
Thank you very much.
So with that said, getting back to us in front of you tonight is a consideration for two different types of actions. One is to adopt the Three Mile Lane Area Plan as a supplemental document to our Comprehensive Plan, and the second is actually a text amendment into our Comprehensive Plan itself. The text amendment into our Comprehensive Plan reads that the Comprehensive Plan Map Amendments and any associated rezones consistent with the Three Mile Lane Area Plan could be initiated by the city or property owners through future map amendment applications, at which time any necessary changes to the transportation system plan would need to be made. Until the Comprehensive Plan Map Amendments are adopted for individual properties, the properties would continue to be subject to the use provisions of current Comprehensive Plan Map and zoning map designations and provisions of any property-specific plan development overlay zones. Those properties would still be subject to any new development standards of the new Three Mile Lane Overlay Zone. And I think that's important to recognize that that's also part of your action, because there's been a lot of confusion as to what does an action of adopting the area plan to the, as a supplemental document to the Comprehensive Plan do in terms of changing colors on a map, or in terms of changing our TSP? It doesn't actually implement any of those changes, but it does provide future guidance for those changes when they need to be made. And that can be initiated by either the city or property owners. So the study area is 1,300 acres. We asked three questions, and I kind of framed it this way for you tonight to try and create pathways for your discussion, but the first question we asked is, how can this area best serve McMinnville now and into the future? All land is currently in the city, so there's no discussion of bringing additional land into the city. It's really talking about, how does this land in the city develop to serve our community moving forward? And we had a 20-year planning horizon of 2021 to 2041. We call that the vision, the vision of how this land is going to serve the city. Then the second question we asked is, does our current Comprehensive Plans or our foundational planning documents support that vision? We call that the land use plan. And then the third question we asked is, how does that future vision impact the state and local transportation system, the infrastructure piece of it? And that's the infrastructure. So those three elements are the elements that are critical to this, to this area planning discussion. The vision itself is the project goal, so the vision is all about economic development, cohesive land use, transportation, aesthetics and design, and residential quality of life, and those goals are not in any priority order. They're represented in terms of the land use vision by identifying where we can have high-density housing to serve affordable housing, where we can have a good industrial campus that we're calling the Innovation Center to bring good jobs to McMinnville, where we can have more commercial options to serve our growing community, and that's identified as a mixed-use town center, where we can have a larger healthcare campus as we prepare for baby boomers and a growing healthcare industry, where we can have better open spaces, trail connectivity, bike ped mobility in this area, because there's a lot of, it's very disconnected, these disparate land uses, and then where we can support future tourism development. So that's the land use plan supporting that vision. The transportation plan, the infrastructure piece of it, was the second piece of it, that's, that took about two years to do that analysis with transportation modeling and scenarios, and what came out of that data analysis is that it maintains Highway 18 as a state expressway and freight route, commonly called the bypass here, but that's the Oregon Highway Plan classification for it. It meets all of the Oregon Highway Plan mobility and access standards, it follows the 1996 Oregon Highway 18 corridor refinement plan, and the improvements that are in the plan would be required if the plan is adopted or not, and I think that was a tripping point for us for a while, because the plan changes, the plan doesn't change the outcome that much in the larger scheme of the system. So Highway 18 is going to carry more traffic in the future than it does today, whether this Three Mile Lane Area Plan is adopted or not. The transportation improvements that are identified in it, or similar improvements, if we choose to go in a different direction, will need to be constructed whether the Three Mile Lane Area Plan is adopted or not. So in 20 years, this land will develop one way or another, and there will be need for improvements on the highway. The corridor refinement plan adopted in 1996 is being followed now, and it will continue to be followed as we continue to manage this corridor. The McMinnville Transportation System Plan is being followed, and we will update that, and it will continue to follow that Oregon Highway 18 corridor refinement plan. And we will continue to manage to the state-adopted performance metrics for Highway 18. So the existing conditions right now for Highway 18 are really good. It's not that congested, actually. And so in terms of how we measure things, and we look at it as the 30th busiest hour of the day, of the year, excuse me, we call that the PM peak hour, and then we go out and measure that, and right now they're scoring a level of service B. With our current Comprehensive Plan in play, with no changes, no adoption of the Three Mile Lane Area Plan, with growth expected at 2041, those intersections and performance at them will change to .74 and .63. So that's what's going to happen, forecasted. If we can move forward the Three Mile Lane Area Plan with the land use vision that's in there, and the land use plan to support that, we're changing about a little less than 6% of the acreage in terms of Comprehensive Plan designations. That's not a huge lever inch of change for 1,400 acres, and so really, the performance standards at the intersections aren't changing that much either. They are growing from .74 to .76 at Norton Avenue, and from .63 to .64 Cumulus Avenue. So the congestion will be there that people have been talking about, regardless of this Three Mile Lane Area Plan moves forward or not, it's not congestion that's beyond what the Oregon Highway Plan considers congestion that's acceptable from a state standard. We're also following the Highway 18 corridor refinement plan that was adopted in 1996. It has three phases of improvements in it. It follows the same standard as the state standard of this level of service C. You hit that, you go beyond it, you move to the next phase of improvements. Eventually, it is planned that there will be no intersections on Highway 18, and there will be an interchange at Cumulus Avenue, which is the intersection where you turn to go to the museums right now. So the intersection at Norton Avenue, where you turn to go to the hospital or to the cinema, that will be shut down from Highway 18 and will be using local frontage roads. We're not there yet, though. The growth doesn't determine that. And the reason why we're not there yet is because we, quite frankly, we didn't grow as much as expected in that 1996 plan. There is over 400 acres of land that was not brought into the UGB that was actually modeled in a scenario for that planning process. So the most controversial element of this plan has been the proposed commercial rezone, the recommendations for 40 to 60 acres. We've talked that it's 33 acres that was modeled, because there's a lot of expectation to set aside public land for that future interchange at that intersection. This was, this was a, this was a vision that was, that was supported when it was presented to the Planning Commission and the City Council in work sessions, when we came to you in work sessions and said, this is what come out of this process. We're now going to move forward into the infrastructure stage of this planning effort. Do you support the vision? It was also supported when we went through the UGB amendment and identified this as a land use efficiency. So it wasn't a new idea or a new proposal that came forward into this public hearing process. However, it has become a lightning rod for this public hearing process. One of the reasons it was recommended as a part of the vision is that it has been identified, people have identified that they want more commercial options in McMinnville, more commercial amenities was identified as a priority. We've heard testimony from people who say it's not needed, we've heard testimony from people who feel, say it is needed, and we've also provided the data that shows that people are shopping in other communities for general merchandise and provisions. We have over 300,000 trips a year occurring from city and McMinnville households just to target Costco and Fred Meyer in our neighboring communities. So that's retail leakage, and we as a community need to decide if we want to provide those amenities here for our households, or continue to say, you need to go somewhere else to get that. That's a policy choice and a value choice, but the data is there. It's also a food desert in this area for the residential neighborhoods. We've had a lot of discussion about, is there an opportunity for a neighborhood activity center to provide the grocery needs for these, for these residential neighborhoods, or does it need to be a larger? to be a larger food establishment than that? That's also a policy choice. And then there was discussion of there's 200 acres of vacant industrial land that's been in the city for 40 years, zoned industrial, that has not developed. It's very expensive to develop that land as industrial land, because the transportation improvements to protect Highway 18, which is all that local frontage road that needs to be built to keep those trips off the highway, are expensive. And quite frankly, industrial development does not need visibility of a Highway 18 to be successful. They don't need that sort of adjacency. And so it's an expensive price per square foot for industrial land, which is normally not located in such a visible area. And so the question was if we need more commercial amenities because households are shopping elsewhere, as we think about growing to 45,000, does it make sense to put that here so that it can also cover the costs of the infrastructure to serve the industrial land behind it so that we can get that land developed and providing jobs for the community? So this commercial site has been described as a large regional mall, a big-box shopping retail center akin to Kaiser Station. The project advisory committee and the plan itself describe it as a mixed-use town center. And that's nomenclature from the real estate industry, but really what it's meant to be is it does look at a couple of anchor retailers, and it looks at smaller retailers that support that, but it's developed in such a way where it still has this grid pattern system to prevent the sort of large expansive parking lots that we see from the sort of '80s, '90s developments and really start looking at tree-lined streets and pedestrian walkability and things like that. So the public testimony you've heard for this mixed-use town center is varied. There's been people who have testified saying that they do need more retail choices. There's been, you've heard from parents who have described going out of town to shop for things for their children. We've also heard from people who say, no, you can find everything you need in McMinnville. You don't need to leave McMinnville to find amenities. We've heard from people who say big-box retail, however we want to describe it, because I think everybody describes it a little bit differently, is not appropriate for McMinnville. That's not what we think we want to see in our community. We've heard that giving up the industrial land will give up high-paying jobs. We've heard additional retail will lead to congestion on Highway 18. And then we have also heard that the commercial development is actually needed to fund the infrastructure to support the industrial land development to bring those jobs to McMinnville. We looked at data. There was a lot of question through the public hearings as is this true? Can we push on this a little bit? What does that mean? We talked about retail leakage. Analysis done in 2019 showed that there was $205 million being leaked out of this market area. There was a question of how much is that online? We went through that process. Conservatively, we can say it's 15% to 20%. At the time, we thought it was about 11%, and Nation Ride, right now, we're looking at 12% to 13%. We also did placer data sets. So this shows where people are shopping in terms of households in McMinnville. It's kind of scary how much information is out there about us, but it shows exactly where people are going to shop in terms of households in McMinnville within the city limits. And so we went through that process through your last public hearing and provided that to you. And overall, there's about 300,000 visits in the last 12 months to Fred Meyer, Target, and Costco, just looking at those retailers. We talked about size, retail size. What does it mean? What does big-box retail mean? And what's too large for McMinnville? So we looked at Lowe's, which is our largest development, which is 170,000 square feet. Walmart's 118,000 square feet. And then really, you start getting into the grocery stores, which are more along the lines of 40 to 60-ish thousand square feet. Fred Meyer's store in Newburgh is 180,000 square feet, and then Target and Walmart and Sherwood are about 150-ish. We talked about different types of stores in terms of size. So your larger stores are generally those that carry both general merchandise and full grocery provisions. So if you think of the Super Walmarts and the Super Targets, they have, one half is grocery, one half is general merchandise. And then you have your specialty retailers, which are the larger retailers, like the home improvements stores. We talked about size from the perspective of the question isn't whether that size is right for this site. The question is whether that size is right for the community. If we make a decision that, you know, big-box retail is not appropriate for McMinnville, and those are policy decisions that decision-making bodies have made, and it's available to you to make that, then we write that code and we say this is the limitation on size of retail in McMinnville, but it's for the whole city because we've made the decision that way. If you make it for the site, then there has to be some sort of factual basis for that limitation on that site. If you say, you know, we're going to allow commercial to move forward, but only at this size, then why only at that size? Is it because the transportation impact is too great? Is it this or that? And then if the factual data says it's this, so the transportation impact is too great, then our decision is anything that achieves that type of impact or greater is not allowed on that site regardless of the type of use. So we call that a trip cap, but we essentially say only these many trips are allowed. Because what we can't do is target-specific property without factual basis. The plan itself also has a variety of different policies in it for implementation, for future implementation. So if you adopt it, it says we're going to move forward with these types of implementation policies. That would be the next step, is doing those implementation policies. A lot of those talk to things such as design and development standards. So what does it look like on the outside in terms of the building itself and also how the site's developed? And then also things such as what types of building architecture to use. There's some eco stuff in there as well. And process. It talks about the need for anything that's a certain size would need to go through a planned development, which means it will go to City Council, Planning Commission, and City Council as a site plan to review and won't be administratively reviewed. So we'll still go through a public process. Throughout the public testimony, we have received testimony that has provided recommendations for amending the plan. At the last, in July, we brought some of those amendments to you. We were provided with some more amendments. Staff went through those and made some additional amendments based on those recommendations. Our lens for deciding which ones we're recommending to you is really based on the fact of does this clarify the recommendation that's coming to you from the public advisory, Project Advisory Committee and the Planning Commission? Or does it reinforce the data that's in the analysis? So this is all existing decisions that have been made, and it just clarifies it? Or is it a substantive policy change? If it clarifies what the public process has brought to you, we felt really comfortable suggesting that's a good amendment, let's move that forward. If it changes substantially the recommendations that we come to you, we've decided that that's your decision to make and direction to make to us, and then the amendments would be made in that regard. We had lots of public engagement in this. We had five public hearings, five public presentations, four design chariots, three public open houses, one public survey that was bilingual, and one town hall. People participate in many different ways in terms of public process and feel comfortable in different types of public processes. And there was also a lot of public process that came to being in terms of developing this plan. So the volunteer group that worked for three years, meeting and sort of listening to the data and reviewing it and putting this together for you. There was also opportunities where this was brought forward to City Council and Planning Commission at different decision-making milestones as it went through the process as well. The public testimony that we've received, we provided that to you as an attachment to the staff report. We estimate that there were about 125 people that testified in total with both oral and written testimony. And what we did is we just looked at the individuals that testified and not how many times they testified, and then that there were seven organizations. Most of your testimony has been written testimony, and from that, we then divided it up into how people provide their addresses in terms of residency within the city or outside the city. And from that, we concluded that Friends of Yamhill County and Thousand Friends provide frequent testimony, both oral and written, of the organizations. So of the seven organizations, most of them testified once. ODOT came forward a couple of times based on your request. Friends testified, I think, at most of the public hearings, both written and oral. And then you had several individuals that provided frequent testimony as well, both oral and written. Most of the people that testified frequently were opposed to certain elements of the plan, and I would say namely the proposed commercial site, but there are other elements in there as well. So the considerations for you tonight is this is a plan meant to accommodate growth through 2041, and we're estimated by the state direction to plan for about 45,000 people within our city limits. The transportation improvements, as I stated, that are identified in this Three Mile Lane Area Plan will be needed whether the Three Mile Lane Area Plan is adopted or not adopted. So when we update the TSP and we look at this 2021 to 2041 planning horizon, those elements are all going to come into the TSP probably just to support the development that's on the comp plan today. Highway 18 will get more congested. I feel fairly comfortable saying that, whether the plan's adopted or not, adopted, and that this was developed by a project advisory committee, recommended to you by the Planning Commission, and then it's been endorsed by the Oregon Department of Transportation, McMinnville Chamber of Commerce, MEDP. Friends of Yamhill County, Thousand Friends have expressed their support of some elements of the plan and expressed their opposition to the mixed-use town center. And then in terms of our residents that have testified, they appear to be divided in terms of their support of the plan and also in terms of their support specifically of the mixed-use town center. The plan itself is compliant. It's compliant with state land use goals. It's compliant with state and local transportation standards and the McMinnville Comprehensive Plan. And so really, what you're looking at in front of you tonight is a policy decision for the City Council in terms of how this land serves the community moving forward. So what that means is you're really going back to that sort of vision, land use plan, and infrastructure, and thinking, one, do I like the vision? Two, does the land use plan support that and move it forward? And three, am I comfortable with the infrastructure data that's been provided that supports that vision? So when it comes down to sort of scrubbing that through, my team's that down, try to think through what would be the different options for you as you work through this. We recognize it's a tough decision. This is a big decision for the city. So if you support the vision for the area, you're comfortable with the land use alternative, you're comfortable with the infrastructure analysis, then really, you support the plan and you're into an adoption of the plan scenario. If you support the vision, but you don't really think the land use plan itself supports the vision, in a not-quite needs to be tweaked, but you think the infrastructure, you're comfortable with the infrastructure analysis, then you're supporting the plan, but you think there's a few tweaks that need to be made. So that's really adopting the plan with additional amendments as directed by City Council. If you support the vision and the land use plan, but you're not comfortable with the data for the infrastructure analysis and you think more work needs to happen, then you need to identify what you think needs more analysis and provide the resources to do it. This was a grant-funded project. It was about $300,000. There is a lot of work that goes into the analysis and the modeling and all of that. And so we would need more resources to be able to reaffirm something that's in there. If you don't support the vision, really, you're at a point where, you know, that's a no-go, right? You don't support the vision, so don't adopt the plan. You can either send it back to the Project Advisory Committee and say, you know, we don't support it, these are our problems with it, and fund more work for them to rework it or shelf it at this point in time. If we shelf it, we did ask the ODOT, because it is a TGM grant, that if we shelved it, will there be issues with the city having to pay back the grant? And their response was no, because we have made a good earnest effort to take this through the process and get to a conclusion. So the options we provided to you and the staff recommendation, and we're here, Bill Kabeizman and I are both here to help you as you go through the discussion for what the sort of different pathways are in terms of process and procedures. And we tried to think that through for you, but you can adopt it, adopt the plan. You can adopt the plan with amendments, that you provide additional amendments. And when we say adopt the plan, it's the one that's a date, September 13th, that we've brought to you, that has the recommended amendments from the public testimony. You can send the plan back to the Project Advisory Committee or back to the Planning Commission for future dialogue with specific directions, or you can elect not to move forward with it at all. What we're looking for is direction, and what we'll do based on your direction is provide you with an ordinance and a findings document for action at a future meeting. So that concludes.
Thank you very much. So what we're going to do, because I'm sure there's a lot of, I'm not sure, but I'm anticipating that there is council discussion that's going to, will occur surrounding this. So what I'd like to do to start is go down the dais and please just name the topics that you would like to discuss without getting into them. So if you would like to discuss building size or transportation, et cetera, and we'll see where the majority of the council feels the discussion needs to land, and then that's how we will start. So by all means, if one counselor says, well, I want to discuss, you know, X, and you also want to discuss that, please, please make that note at this time. And so that's how we're just going to have a little order to the discussion instead of everybody talking about all of their things all at once. And then we will begin. So Counselor Chenoweth, are there topics you would like to discuss regarding the Three Mile Lane Area Plan? And if so, could you enumerate them for me?
Well, I wasn't expecting to go this way, so now I've got to think about this to see.
Would you like me to come back to you?
Would you be willing to? That would be kind.
Sure. Counselor Gary, are you ready for my surprise question as well?
Love it. I'll do them all, all the topics, please. I think the main two I could think of would be infrastructure, and I guess sub under that would be actual hard infrastructure, pipes, roads, utilities and services, as well as city service capacity for that, onboarding all of that, if that donation makes sense. And then transportation, specifically pedestrian-based transportation. Those would be my two main areas.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Menke?
Transportation is one I would like to also discuss, and also the commercial center in particular.
Thank you.
Also, I'll brief one on housing.
Thank you. And Counselor Payne?
I won't add anything to the discussion list, but I just want to say, Heather, I really appreciate sort of the redlined version and being able to go through and clearly identify the updates and kind of the more descriptive detail in this version of the plan that answers a lot of the questions. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Peralta?
I would like to discuss the rezone of that industrial, the 200-plus industrial acre And I would also like to express my appreciation to Heather for the work that she does in terms of preparing us.
Thank you, Counselor. And Counselor Chenoweth?
I don't think I have anything to add, although I'd like to hear from my fellow counselors if they have a difference in the vision from what was laid out, what their vision difference is. So I guess maybe a talk on the vision, just so I could, because I want to hear where everybody's coming from more than anything. And then also, I would also like to express my appreciation, having worked a lot with Heather during this process. I've been very impressed at her desire to try to get to win-wins on every issue that's brought before her. And I hope that the reason for your touching transparency was not because of something that I recently said. Okay, good. Your willingness to be transparent was moving. Thank you.
Thank you. And Council President Garvin?
Thank you. Transportation and infrastructure, big ones for myself, and also, as Sal mentioned, and I think Kelly, the commercial kind of rezone piece, I have concerns around that as well.
Mayor Grabkin, can I add one? Environmental and more specifically, natural resources.
So before we get too much into the meat of this, I do want to take a moment and to thank the many community groups that have participated, both in the development of the Three Mile Lane Area Plan, and then in the process throughout, regardless of your perspective on that plan, the community engagement is key to us being able to make good decisions and bring things forward in a thoughtful and educated way. As our planning director pointed out, we received well over 100 comments from both citizens and those in the area with their thoughts. We've had a... We've had a robust interaction with many of the groups that work with the city in all sorts of capacities, and of course, our citizens advisory committee, which has worked on this as well for many years, including the planning commission, where a lot of this has been done, and then I, I don't, and then of course, the city staff that has carried that through. So just a very, a large thank you to our, to our community for the effort that's gone into this. And then also, I want to take a moment just to say to council, thank you and thank you for your attention to this. It's never easy when we have something before us where the community clearly has divided thought and trying to extrapolate from both the participation and then the comments that we receive and the individual dialogues that you have, person-to-person, via email and phone calls. These large, large decisions that have large effects down the road can be quite, can be quite weighty. And you also have a huge opportunity in front of you right now in terms of how to grow McMinnville both thoughtfully and responsibly. And there may not be a single agreed-upon path going forward. However, there are many, many things on which our community aligns. And there are many issues in this plan, or there are many issues in which this, this plan, there are many issues in our community which this plan addresses or attempts to address. So I encourage council to be both mindful and visionary in your decision-making going forward. And with that, I will skip everything else I wrote. And the thing that most was brought up, and of course, not surprisingly, is the thing which has had the most controversy around it. So why do we, why don't we start there by talking about the proposed rezon and the, the commercial center? And if counselors will just raise their hands and then please, if we could keep our comments kind of on commercial center tonight and also referencing back to your packet, there was a lot of guidance in the packet that talked about recommendations or thoughts from the community. And there, and then the subscript of those recommendations also let us know that if, if and when policy direction was needed. So that's pages 258, or 257 to 260 about in your packet, if you, if you'd like to reference that. And then we will open the floor here. We'll start by discussing this commercial center. Who would like to go first? Counselor Peralta, thank you.
Thank you. Ken, is this, this is much better than before, right?
Yes, thank you.
So I guess my first comment is I'm generally supportive of the plan, I can get there on a lot of aspects of it. I really appreciate the work, I think a lot of good work has been done. I'm not enthusiastic, unsupportive of the rezon from industrial to commercial at this time. Have several concerns. The first concern is really not wanting to make a change to that designation ahead of proposals that we know are coming to our council. If retailers want to bring a plan that's at variance with the current use, I think they should just do that rather than us rezoning it ahead of, ahead of that potential. Second concern related to any town center at that location along the lines of what's been discussed is that I feel like this part of town has already been severely damaged by speculation that McMinnville would be a stopping point for retailers going, visits to and from the coast. I feel like the Tanniger Outlet experience that we had is kind of a, a warning about relying on an economic model that's depending on people stopping on that, on that weekend trip. I just, I just don't see it panning out, particularly with the direction that Big Box has been going, which is just trending downward. Third concern is that I don't think there are very many places in the whole state with 220 contiguous acres of manufacturing. I was seeing a bunch of manufacturing areas getting cited, mostly data centers, not perfect for what we want here. But, you know, they were just saying that it's rare to find parcels above 100 acres. And here we have 220 acres that really would be ideal for a certain type of use that is higher wages, higher benefits, and I think a better long-term fit. And it might take 10 years for that to come here. You know, it's been 40, but it, but it can take some time, that doesn't mean it won't happen going forward. And finally, you know, Heather raised a lot of pretty detailed considerations about what we might want to do if we wanted to tweak the retail framework for that area. And I just don't feel like it's, I just don't feel comfortable addressing that in the context of this one meeting. So if the decision of the council was to go forward with a bunch of tweaks to retail policy in the city, I think that's something we would definitely want to carry forward. So those are all my main, my main points on this particular.
Thank you, Counselor. Other counselors, Counselor Menke, please.
The commercial center is driving, my point of view, most of the opposition to the passage of the Three Mile Lane area plan. I've lived in McMinnville since 1980. In that time, I was raising a family here and most of our shopping was done outside of town. Frankly, still probably is. In that time, Paul, I was raising a family, okay. I know my, our plan responds to the following policies not identified by friends of Oregon with the same goal sections that they cite in the McMinnville Comprehensive Plan. Commercial uses and services which are not available to McMinnville residents should be encouraged to locate in the city and the city shall encourage your economic efforts with greater McMinnville Chamber of Commerce, McMinnville Industrial Promotion, the Downtown Association, Yamhill County, Oregon Economic and Community Development and other appropriate groups. I feel we should be aware, if these big box stores are coming, are a possibility, that they do a great deal of market research prior to building a store. I think in the past, when we looked at this about 10 years down the road, or prior years, we were basically turned down because we don't have enough people in this area and we don't have, frankly, I don't think they wanted to put the infrastructure costs in. Normally, these stores come in later after a lot of the infrastructure's already been built. I think we have some time with the implementation of this plan to work these things out. I think this is kind of like the beginning thought process in the whole thing. I personally could easily vote for the whole plan as it, as it stands now. But I, I appreciate Sal's comments and I do have concerns a little bit about the, the, the commercial center. So I'm willing to at least listen to what other proposals are.
Thank you. Other counselors on the commercial center? Counselor Garvin?
Yeah, interesting to hear, other people had concerns about the Tanger development across the highway, because that is what gives me concern. Reading through the packet, the way I read it is that there is some stopgaps in there with design standards and kind of how anything over 10 acres will have to be through an overlay approval process that would address that. I guess I would just want some clarity from Heather on that, if that is the case, or if I'm reading that incorrectly.
So I don't know what happened with the outlet mall, but to your question of, does the, does the Three Mile Lane area plan have policies in it that state that future developments will need to go through a planned development process? Which means they will come to you in terms of a site plan? Yes, it does state that, and you can even make that really specific. You could, you could say, you know, for, so it says for 10 acres or more, you could lessen that. Or you could even say for any development on the mixed-use town center that needs to come forward as a planned development. It's already, that's already been described to the private property owners and they're supportive of that, so.
And of current, I think of like the Rice property out there where Lowe's and the Burger King just went through and things like that. Was there a planned development overlay with any size restriction on that out there? Or was that just a one-time approval of zoning and people have just applied for things as they've came through?
To my knowledge, we have not had any planned development on basic commercial land that had a size limitation on it. I was visiting with Sedoni Winfield recently, where she felt the planning commission had put that in play in the, in the code, but it never did go into the code. We had, there was a discussion about large format commercial and what it would look like. And so we do have a chapter in the code that says, you know, if, if it's over 25,000 square feet, it needs to look like this. And it talks about, you know, breaking it up and all that sort of stuff, but there is no size limitation. And there, there was no size limitation on the site where Lowe's is right now.
Okay, thank you. With that, I would agree with Sal that if, if there is a desire for any size limitations that, that is brought forward in a more robust discussion, since it is, would be a citywide endeavor. As far as commercial goes, that's my thoughts on, on that commercial piece. And ready to talk about other things after other counselors are.
Thank you. Counselor Gary, you were ready? And then I'll go to Counselor Chenoweth after that.
I'd echo a lot of what Counselor Peralta said, as well as Counselor Garvin. The, the commercial was one I, I struggled with the most. I'm interested in having that more robust community discussion around retail sizes and also struggle with overall building sizes versus individual uses inside of those building sizes. So my consuming habits are not one that lends me great expertise in those areas. But I, I also mainly struggle with sort of that retail leakage and think about the arguments for this in terms of what it could draw in. And I know while we have no control over what specific business goes in, it's, you know, do we have to be everything for everyone? In terms of, do you have to have seven places to be able to get soccer cleats or, or whatever, whatever example you want to use? What do we need to be everything to everyone? And it brings me around to sort of the concept of retail leakage that I struggled with. And, and thought more about sort of amenity leakage, or, you know, you can't build a beach and everyone's going to the beach. What, what do you, what do you just have to live with? That habits of people moving around are more habits of people moving around, not I have to go buy this thing. And so I just struggle with all of the data and information. And so there wasn't a point on that point, but other than it's, it's perhaps the murkiest for me. I do think there's, there's relevant discussion in how we regulate what goes in, because I hear some concern and share some concern about the largeness of the format of the retail that goes in. So I'd be more in the pensive category on charging for it relative to the retail at this time. I also am interested in how weighting would, would change the current processes underway relative to usage of that land, so, applications. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you. We're going to go to Counselor Chenoweth and then Counselor Menke.
May I ask Heather a question?
Heather, you have two questions coming at you, one from Counselor Chenoweth and one from Counselor Menke.
Process-wise, if the council were to decide that they didn't want to rezon now as Sal, as Counselor Peralta suggested, and instead wanted to leave it industrial and until after we have the hearings come before us, how does that change the discussion?
So I, I might have Bill help me on this a little bit, but what I, so your action doesn't rezon any property. I just want to make sure that's clear. What you are saying is that moving forward, this is what we support as the future vision for this area. And then if someone comes forward with a land use application to rezon that property, they're coming in saying, we're meeting your future vision of the area. If you didn't adopt this and it didn't, it didn't have that in that, they can still come forward with the request for you to consider changing the comp plan map and the zone map to, to commercial based on their application, and you can review it accordingly. We do also have in our comp plan, this is where it gets a little difficult. We have a comp plan policy that talks about that we will move forward with a rezon of 40 acres as a land use efficiency. So we would need to work through that, because that creates a finding for them. But I think what I heard from Counselor Peralta, and check me if I'm wrong, was that you were interested in making sure that if someone came forward with a land use application for a comp plan map, zone map amendment, that you wanted to be able to see what the proposed plan was for the site.
I don't like the idea of us making changes in this plan that will modify things that are going to, that we know are coming up to us. I just feel uncomfortable with that. And I just would prefer it if, when people bring their application, that they bring it in with the current zone that we have in place and no additional changes to the vision of the area and so on.
So Bill, I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I, I think you summarized it well. I guess the, what I think about is that, you know, the, for any development on those areas where we've got the quasi judicial applications out there, these changes would have to be made. And, you know, there, you've got the plan provision that Heather talked about, that talked about rezoning as part of a land use efficiency. And if no applications were pending, this would still be part of the discussion before you. You know, and you could choose to do it or not. But you also have the push from, from below, you've got the policy in the plan from, you know, up top. And, and that you also have the, the push from below of the property owner saying, we want to make those changes. And whether it happens as part of this process or part of the application, it's, you know, to the extent anything moves forward, it has to happen. The question is whether you want to do it here in terms of a bigger vision or in the applications as part of a more specific vision for those particular properties. I don't know if that helps or hurts or confuses things more, but you, I think you can do it or not.
To my thinking, would it be accurate to say that not changing the plan would be a signal that, you know, we're not, you know, potentially enthusiastic about doing commercial on that property? Otherwise, we would have rezoned or made changes to that effect.
You know, not changing it doesn't necessarily send a signal, but the findings and the reasons for not changing, I think, send the signal. And so that's, that's what I think Heather and I want to hear is what's, what's the reasons? And how does that relate to, you know, the criteria that we've, we've got?
What about the applicability of the goalpost idea that is, you know, if we, things that are currently under application are set to the rules at the time of the application.
Well, so what's interesting about this is it's a comprehensive plan map amendment. So that puts it into a different category altogether, because this, this is, comprehensive plan is considered the city, the city vision. And so, one, we're not in the 120-day rule clock. You don't have to make a decision on that plan within 120 days, we don't have to ask them to toll the clock, none of that's in play. And then also, the goalpost rule is not in play either, is the way I understand it, Bill. You can, as the policymakers, make a decision about what you see as the future vision of an area relative to the comprehensive plan after a, a submittal has, we've received a submittal that has a comprehensive plan map amendment in it. Is that right, Bill?
Yeah, that, that's correct. You know, you're, I think Commissioner Gary's absolutely right. You want to be concerned about the goalpost rule in almost every application. But this is an odd one, because the comprehensive plan has to change to accommodate it. When you, you know, the, the goalpost rule only applies to zone changes and permits. And once you add that comp plan provision in there, changing the 120-day rule goes away as well as the goalpost rule. And so, you know, it's, because they're asking the city to change their vision as part of the comprehensive plan, that, that sort of pressure comes off in terms of the 120-day and the goalpost rule.
So Bill, I had a follow-up question for Counselor Peralta's question, which was the, the signal that's being sent. If, if the council decide, there's been a lot of dialogue of if, if the commercial rezon goes forward, how big? And we have three private applications that are much bigger than what was considered and recommended in this plan. If there is a decision made relative to size, a decision made relative to size that's articulated in this plan, what does that do to the pipeline? That's in terms of them creating findings.
In terms of, they say, I'm just going to pick a number at random, you know, we only want 10 acres of commercial out there. And we've got applications for 100 acres. And then, you know, when those applications come in, I think, you know, that puts it in sort of an odd place. There's an element of first one in the door, but there's also an element of what's the most appropriate place to locate that 10 acres. And so maybe that first one in the door says, you know, we could do it here, but we think there are better places. And, you know, I think we'd want to look at the criteria, the comprehensive plan changes and make sure we've got that covered. But yeah, you know, it would complicate the review of the quasi judicial applications that have significantly more property than the council is comfortable changing the comp plan on.
Okay, and we have a question from councillor Menke as well.
Can I finish my thoughts?
Yes, sorry. That was one continuation from your thought.
Yeah, I just kept going.
Yes. It was good to explore. Thank you. Thank you for everybody for getting into that dialogue. Yes, please finish councillor Chenoweth.
So I guess, one of the things I'm struggling with in this whole conversation is we're talking about a comprehensive plan map here, which is a vision document. It's a 10,000-foot document. And we keep seeming to get caught up in the weeds of the details on some of this. From my perspective, what we're wanting to say, and focusing just on this one part because that's where we're at, is do we support having commercial land there or not? What that commercial land's going to look like comes in our later discussions as the applications come forward. Am I getting this straight?
It can be either or, and you've had a little bit of that discussion here. You're right. So the area plan's a vision document. It's not changing the comp plan map. It's not, no colors are changing on any maps that we have at the city as a land use action based on your action relative to this plan. It sets the stage for, this is how we would like to see this area develop in the future. The size, usually area plans, you know, they're bubble diagrams intentionally because the size of a future land use is, you know, that comes later as you work through the issues. And in terms of how it's, the design and development standards, there's some specific language in this plan that's policies that will drive future design and development standards. And so, and there is language in here based on some of the language that friends provided where they wanted to strengthen the fact that, we had some language in there that said should, it got strengthened to shall, those types of things, that future development shall respond to these policies, shall do this, shall do that. Future development will need to respond to these if we don't have them in place. So the purpose of this plan is you have a whole section that's an implementation strategy. And that implementation strategy is next steps, put together the overlay with the code language in it that has the design and development standards.
Okay, so for me, I guess the way I look at this is that I do believe we need to have commercial land out there. I don't see the tang or failure, honestly, as a failure. I see it as an attempt before its time. And I see that what has happened since then has been a benefit to our community. We have Chomecat out there. We have a lot of resources out there. For those who like movies, we have a movie theater out there. So while its initial attempt didn't take hold, it eventually developed into what is, I think, today, an asset for our community. So yes, I would have designed it a little better. I would have made sure the frontage road was clear, you know. But I don't think, I don't look at it as a complete failure. I also don't look at it as exemplifying what's going to happen today. The population was a whole lot less 25 years ago. Things have radically changed in this community. We've got development occurring on a very fast pace in the northwest corridor area of our town. And lastly, I was really, there were two pieces of testimony that in the last session, combined with my mother, that really spoke to me. And I always have to listen to my mother. So, and my mother said to me, I just want to find a place to buy a pair of shoes in McMinnville. And it's frustrating me that I can't find a place to buy a pair of shoes. And combining that with the cleat story that's already been referenced, and then the statistic of almost 300,000 trips a year are going out of our community to only three companies. That doesn't include all the rest of the shopping that's being done. I feel like if we're not, when I combine all that together, I feel like we need to have more commercial here. And I don't want it to look like the malls that we've had in the past. I want it to be intentionally designed. I want it to look right. But I feel like on this plan, the question I'm being asked is, do I support commercial there or do I not support commercial there? And I think the answer for me is, I support commercial there for all the reasons I articulated and because I really want to see the innovation center take hold. And I don't believe, and I appreciate your comments, Sal, but I don't believe, it's been 40 years and nobody's been interested. I don't want to sit on a hope. I want to sit on a concrete movement that's going to help move our community forward for the jobs that our citizens need so that we don't continue becoming a bedroom community for Portland. And so for me, I would be very happy to entertain some limitations that if the council is concerned, I'm totally with you on that. I want that area to be designed purposefully and uniquely McMinnville. But I also don't want to hinder the progress that needs to go forth. And I think that's my comments.
Thank you. Councillor Menke, thank you for your patience.
Well, I strongly agree that I do want to see commercial there. And I guess if tweaking it some is the answer would resolve some of your concerns.
I just don't think, I just don't think we should be doing that tweaking tonight. And whatever we decide tonight, we know we're going to get applications coming forward to that area with a certain plan. So I don't understand, you know, why rezoning that area is necessary to get those applications. They'll bring them in any case. My concern is we're going to give up too much tonight. We're going to agree to a plan that in process approves 40 or 60 acres of commercial. And I don't support that. That's way more than I support. That's way more than is needed there. And I haven't heard any kind of guarantee that the kind of retail that we need out there for this is going to be consistent with what we need in this community. I don't consider Tannenger a success. If it was a success, we'd already have a grocery store in that part of town, and we don't. It's a desert. It's a desert right now because, you know, mistakes were made 20 years ago. And I just don't want to get us in a position of making those same mistakes. That doesn't mean I don't want retail. But if we have to have a conversation about what kind of stores we're going to have in this city, whether it's Big Box or something else, I think that's just a longer conversation than we should be taking on tonight.
And I would actually agree with you. I think, as I view this, I see this as just kind of a big overlay that says, well, we think we're going to need retail and we're going to allocate this much. It may not end up being that much overall. I mean, I assume we can make it smaller if we want to, right? But I think we need it. If we say to you we'd like to kind of revisit the issues around this, not tonight, but we're a little bit concerned that we need to do some refinement in this particular area, would that work for an amendment tonight or whatever?
Yeah, so I think one of the directions, and it's outlined in our packet and based on the discussion I've heard, certainly what I would make a suggestion is that this portion regarding the commercial center would be something that we send back to the citizens advisory committee with a little bit more direction so that that can work its way through and get some additional touches.
I would be opposed to pulling the commercial overlay out of this document, if that's what you're saying.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying. Let's...
I have one more thing.
Yes, I know you had a question for director Richards.
No, it's not the question. It's a follow-up to this. I just, hopefully, I haven't forgotten it already. I just feel like, you know, we've kind of come this far. We all kind of, I mean, I'm assuming everybody feels there's got to be some commercial out there one way or the other. So if we can address this, I guess what bothers me is I don't want to see these other applications come in and start dictating what they want and cause confusion. I think we need to know what we want first. And so I don't like the process of them coming in before we have made decisions. Is that correct?
Director Richards, could you address that? So if tonight the council were to send this particular part of the plan regarding the commercial center back to the citizen advisory committee to work through the concerns that have come up related to size limits, et cetera. And that process inevitably will take a number of months. And in the meantime, you have these other applications coming in, or director Richards or Mr. Kavisman, could you address how that would play out, please?
Could you also, while you're addressing that, since we're talking about things that are on the table, can we also address the potential impacts to discussions taking place on the innovation center if we delay this several more months?
In regards to the commercial center? Is that what you mean? The impacts on the innovation center in regards to the commercial center, trying to keep our, this portion of the conversation at least focused?
Well, correct, because there are discussions in place for potential companies that could come to the innovation center that are in, we've got bird in the hand. And this discussion on the, on the commercial side impacts that bird in the hand. How does that impact?
So we have two questions. One is if the, if the council sends the conversation back to the community advisory committee regarding the commercial center, how does that affect any applications that are in the pipeline in terms of rezoning? And then the other question that you're wanting to address, if I understand you correctly councillor, is that we have in our packets and from planning director Richards received information that the innovation center is not feasible without the commercial aspect of this. It's not financially feasible. So I believe your secondary question is, is if this goes back to the citizens advisory committee for review regarding the commercial center, how will that impact, it's also a pipeline question of how will that impact any potential interest in the innovation center portion of the plan?
So we'll answer the innovation center second. Bill, I'm going to pitch hit the first question to you because we have several lawyers watching this in terms of those private property applications. And I guess I would frame it by adding a question is, can the councils state as part of their process with the three mile lane area plan that they will not entertain any comprehensive plan map amendment applications for commercial comp plan designation until such time that it works its way through the citizen advisory committee process?
So as I understand it, and I would, you know, ask you to check what I'm saying because you're far more familiar with those quasi judicial applications than I am. I've seen bits of them, but haven't had a reason to really dive deep into them. But my understanding is that those applications are coming forward based on the comp plan that you currently have that recognizes the need, you know, the efficiency measure of 40 acres in the area. And they would have been submitted regardless of whether you have the three mile lane area plan or not. And so they are making their way through the system. And should you decide to send it, send the whole thing back or just a portion of it, those applications are still pending and you would have to make a decision on them. In terms of saying, we will not entertain such applications, I, you know, the difficulty with that is it, it could be construed as a moratorium of sorts. And to the extent you want to do a moratorium, there's specifics, specific requirements set out in state law that you have to go through to set up a moratorium, finding lack of sufficient public facilities or compelling need. I would suggest a better course to address that is not to have a blanket statement of, we will not entertain this until this is done, as much as review them and decide whether or not they are consistent with your, you know, with what you want to do and the proposed changes are consistent with the comprehensive plan and the criteria. And typically, there's a fair amount of discretion there. And you could get to the same result depending on the specifics of the application of saying, yeah, we're not, you know, we don't approve of this because it doesn't meet our comprehensive plan. I would just be careful of the blanket statement, we're not going to take any more applications on this because that takes you down a path that could be, that could be problematic.
Thank you. And then the second question.
Yes, so, and to follow up, I don't want to speak for the applicants of the quasi judicial land use applications, but I can share that the first one we received was shortly after the UGB amendment was passed by ordinance here in McMinnville in December of 2020. So that was prior to this three mile lane area plan, the traffic scenario now, the transportation analysis and the three mile lane area plan coming to a final draft. So my assumption is it was based on the land use efficiency. But they also have said that they're partners and are watching this process and want to do what the city wants. Passing that on. And so in terms of part two of the question, it is true, we have had interest in the, more interest in the industrial property since the city announced this plan to do the commercial development on the frontage to help offset the infrastructure improvements associated with the industrial land. And there is, I'm under an NDA for one of the projects. That's as far as I can go with that. But it is, you know, they're watching this process because the, quite frankly, the infrastructure improvements are very costly. So the question would be, does the private market pay for the infrastructure improvements or does the public side pay for the infrastructure improvements if needed for that industrial land to develop? Because it's, it is, infrastructure improvements probably can't be penciled on an industrial development.
Mr. Kavisman, anything to add to that?
Not really. I mean, that, it really, it sounds like, and Heather knows more about this than I do, that really the question for industrial development is the infrastructure costs. And there are a variety of different ways they can pay for it by the development itself, by other development in the area, or by the public. And, you know, that is going to impact development out there. It's going to, you know, determine whether or not the costs make sense.
Okay. And then councillor Chenoweth, you had a follow-up?
Well, I was just going to say that really didn't get to my question. My question is, if we delay more, what is that impact on the bird in the hand? I mean, there was some conversations that we are coming toward the end of their due diligence. I don't want us to delay so far. I don't want to rush to a decision either. But I also don't want to delay so far that we chase off somebody. And so I'm just wanting to make sure, if I were to say today, yes, let's go ahead and send this back and delay this conversation, I need to know the risk, I guess is where I'm at.
I don't know that, I don't know that, I don't know that that question can be answered by, by the folks in the room, yeah, by city staff.
Well, I don't even have the answer to that question. And all city staff is operating under this NDA right now. So I can share that I've been in conversation with the project as this process has carried forward. Every time that we've extended the public hearing or extended to a future date, there has been a question asked of how is this impactful to you? And so they were comfortable taking it to this point. That's as much as I know.
Okay. Okay, so generally, without specificity yet, regards to this commercial center, I'm generally hearing from the council that this portion is most likely, or councillor Payne, do you have anything you'd like to add? I'm sorry, we have not heard from you.
Thank you for asking, mayor. No, I'm processing. Thank you. So what I'm, what I'm generally hearing is that this portion of the plan is most likely going to be going back to the citizen advisory committee. I'd like to wait to give specific staff direction until we kind of work through everything because I think, you know, one thing may affect the other. What I'd like to do at this moment is take a five-minute break. And then when we come back, we will discuss transportation. Thank you. It's 8:52. We'll resume at 8:57.
All right. I would invite members of council in the audience to find their seats so we can restart our meeting. If I could invite all members of council back to their seats so we could resume the meeting. All right. We're ready to go back into session. And I've had a chance to touch base with council. And council is not done with this discussion, so I perhaps misread, or perhaps not, but regardless, council is definitely not finished with this portion of the conversation. So apologies to all for, for, for jumping to a conclusion. So I know many of you have more to share. Counselor Menke has a question for staff. Would you like to restart our conversation regarding commercial center with this question, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, so this is for you and the attorney. The reason I asked the question before is, my concern is piecemealing a decision that I kind of like to see taken as a whole. So my question is, if we do address these people, or if we do say no, let's wait, how long is this process going to take? Do we have to go all the way back to the beginning and go through a pack, and then through the, the planning commission and everything? Or can we just take this out, negotiate it out, and bring it back to the council, and maybe in a month's time be able to go with this? Because, I mean, this has been a long process, and I certainly understand people who are interested in investing in this. They need an answer sooner than later.
Yeah. So, Bill?
Am I expressing that correctly?
I'm going to ship this to you, but I think what I hear is, if, if the decision is to have the, the citizen advisory committee refine the commercial discussion and come back with a refined recommendation to city council, does that have to go through a process, again, through the noticing, planning commission, public hearing, city council, public hearing consideration? Or can it be, you know, go back to them, gather them over the next month, make, have them work through this and bring back a recommendation in a month's time?
Yeah. It, it sort of depends on what priority you and that group want to give it, and what you do. To the extent you open the public record again, that, that, that would require going through the notice process. If the record remains closed and it's more of a discussion and deliberations, you want them to come up with, you know, provide more refinement and to the recommendation, but not allow public testimony, then that shortens the, the track considerably, you know, and sort of the more direction and cabining where you go, the, the smaller the amount of discussion that, that they would have. And so it, it really depends on what that, what you want them to do, if that makes sense.
Counselor Chenoweth?
I, I want some clarity for just, I mean, I already kind of got it, but I want it for all of us to get clarity. If, if, in case I was the only one who didn't have it, wasn't the only one who didn't have it, if we send this back to the citizen advisory committee, we're not approving a commercial overlay at this time. We're delaying putting any commercial there. Am I understanding that correctly?
That would be a direction from city council. So that's your choice to decide how you want to move forward with this.
And, and so that's why I kind of wanted to break this out into sections, so we could have discussion, kind of see where people were, and so that at the end, we can kind of say, okay, this is where the discussion has gone, and these are the things we would like to continue or not continue.
I get it. So, understanding what you just said, did you just have your hand up?
It looked like Bill did have-
Yeah, he did.
Yeah, I was going to add a little something to, to what Heather said, which was, you know, to the extent you say, no, we don't want any commercial out there, then, you know, that, that's fairly straightforward. But to the extent you say, we want to send this back to the planning commission, those quasi judicial applications can still move forward. And in fact, you could allow that, approve that type of, you know, the quasi judicial applications based on your current comprehensive plan that anticipates an efficiency measure of rezoning property out there. You know, I suspect that should those quasi judicial applications end up in front of the planning commission and city council for decisions, that you would get a number of citizens would say, don't move forward on this until we complete the area plan, because that is what our vision's going to be. But, you know, you could still review them based on the comprehensive plan that you have now. So sending it back doesn't necessarily mean that those quasi, that the, you know, that those applications or any other application would necessarily grind to a halt.
Understood. My, so drilling this down just a little bit, Heather, you're saying the council could, could say, yes, we do want commercial land. Yes, we're approving three mile lane, but we also want to add some more context through the citizen advisory committee. Please do that. Or we could say, we don't, at this point, we don't want to do anything with the commercial land until the citizen advisory committee looks at it again. Is that what you're telling me? We could do it either way.
Yes, and, and varieties of that. So the three mile lane area plan just puts on the table that there's a vision for commercial development out there. And then there's an implementation policy to now put together design and development standards through a plan development overlay. So that would be the next step work. Or you, so you could adopt the plan and say, go do that work. And when you're doing that work, this is what we want you to look at, X, Y, and Z. Or you could say, we're not comfortable adopting the plan as is. We're not even sure we want commercial out there, and we want more work done on that discussion.
Thank you. And council president has a-
Yeah, follow up for you, Heather. How did we come to the, the 40 acre size of the commercial? Do we as a body have the ability to shrink that if we wanted it to be 30 acres or 20 acres? Or could we increase that if we wanted it to be 60 acres? Like, what was the metric used?
So, so we use, when we, when we were going into the transportation modeling, it's also the same time. So we started the transportation modeling sometime around, I think, September of 2020. And that's the same time when we came to you as city council and said, we're thinking about a 40 acre land use efficiency out here. So that's essentially where that came from. But, and that was because we had done the math in terms of the amount of commercial needed and how much we could put into neighborhood serving commercial. And that's what we were left with after looking at that site by Evergreen. We couldn't, we couldn't figure out where to land that 40 acres. And we knew that there had been a discussion for commercial there, just not how much necessarily. So I think those two things sort of came together in that regard. But yeah, certainly you can, as a body, say, we want to see it limited to X, whatever X is. It hasn't been modeled for X, so I think if you went over the 33 net acres that were modeled, I would be concerned about that because the transportation data is reflecting that modeling. But if you went less than-
And is it safe to assume that you lose about 20%? So you have, you know, if you went to 30 acres, you'd be down to 24 acres of net commercial, or?
Yeah, I guess what I would suggest is if, if you, I would look at it as a direction of net acreage that you would be interested in, because we, we haven't figured out how much public right of way is required in that area yet for the frontage roads and the future interchange and things like that. Because it would be based on the size of the development, too.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. And you said the transportation modeling started in September 20? When did it finish? Like, is it, is there transportation data all kind of the COVID commuting time, or is it some other-
No, so the, they, they did several different types of modeling. So they did, they, they took the counts in 2018. So they took, you know, existing condition counts on the highway. And then from, in 2018 and 2019, they actually updated the transportation model for McMinnville. So we were using an old model based on our old UGB, which never went forward. And so they updated the model. They brought Lafayette into our model. They brought Dayton into our model, because there's a lot of back and forth going on there. And they also updated it into the state highway system. So that takes a long time to put that all together. We actually are looking at individuals, what TASs is what we call them, and assign trips to houses and business. And then in terms, then they ran scenarios. So the first scenario was what happens at 2041 with 45,000 people at the development of the current comp plan? That's that first scenario. The second scenario was not run until sometime around, I'd have to go back into my data, but it's sometime in the fall of 20. And then it finished in April of 2021.
Okay. Thank you. And I don't want to get too far off the commercial discussion.
Thanks. I appreciate it.
Is there a break point where we don't have enough commercial land to float the cost of the, of the infrastructure that we need?
I'm not comfortable answering that discussion, that question. I think if that's a concern for city council, we bring in some expertise, you direct us to get that information from some experts. I'm not comfortable providing that to you.
Thank you. Other councillors? Counselor Peralta?
I think that would be good information to get for a future meeting.
Other councillors on this commercial center? Yeah, Counselor Garvin.
Heather, what, what would be the turnaround time on that expert data or them being in the room to delineate that?
I don't know. It would depend on how deep of data you want to go and, and how comfortable you are with the response. So I have visited with industrial developers locally, as well as brokers, as you have ruled through this discussion, just to reaffirm some of the assumptions we were hearing. And we could also go and hire a consultant, a third party mutual consultant to put the work together. And based on that, they would probably take more time because they're stamping their work, so to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Menke?
I would assume, you know, when we were looking at the recreation center and stuff, we had a certain set amount of property that we would need for that on a standard basis. Is it a likely assumption that with the big box stores, considering that they're kind of going to be at a maximum three, they'd each require maybe 10 acres?
Well, so the big box store discussion always confuses me, because that's not actually the recommendation of the plan.
No, I, I know, I do realize that, but that's a contentious issue at the moment.
Because that's what the quasi judicial stuff has in it. And it's only because we drafted some standards, because we didn't know what to do based on how this document was going to play out. So, I mean, that, that, we're relying on something that doesn't really have a lot of reliance to it. I guess what I would say is if the question is, how much land do they need to develop a certain type of development? So one, the question I would ask of you is what you would want to see in terms of development for McMinnville there, if that's, if that's where we're going. And two, what's sort of the nexus point in terms of that development in terms of size, overall size? So for developers, it's going to be overall square footage that's leased out, whether it's big or small, because that's creating the, the business performer to carry the infrastructure improvements. And so what's that, what's that nexus that gets us where we want to go in terms of offsetting the costs of infrastructure improvements? Those are two different questions.
Yeah, I get that. I guess I'm just kind of thinking like Discovery Meadows is 25 acres. 33 acres, which is kind of like the, the small point in this discussion, doesn't really seem that much more. I mean, even for small stores and one big box store.
Yeah. Why, I, when we started this process back at the planning commission level, we did a scrub of, of different sizes in McMinnville relative to acreage. And the, you know, 33 acres is essentially the same size of, as the Walmart, Winko, Wilco site together.
Okay. Well, that's a good way to look at it. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Are there additional questions of staff at this time? And if not, as opposed to moving on to the next section, what I'd like to do is just touch quickly with each- moving on to the next section, what I'd like to do is just touch quickly with each member of council about how, the direction you would like to see this specific part of the conversation go. And we won't, we won't try to come to a conclusion on that, but just so we're all very aware of where one another stands at this point as we, as we work to move forward together here. Council President, will you start us off?
Thanks. As far as commercial goes, I definitely want to see some commercial out there. I would be willing to entertain if there's other councilors that wanted to reduce that commercial size slightly. I would also be interested in reducing that overlay review from a ten-acre to a five-acre. And other than that, I'll hear out the rest of council. But I don't feel that it needs to go back to the Citizen Advisory Committee and halt this plan, which would likely result in stalling or losing development out there on the industrial side.
Okay, Councilor Gary?
I support further refinement of the retail and commercial number. I think the best way to do that is the referral, but I'd be, if that wasn't the consensus, I'd be supportive of Councilor Garvin's recommendations as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilor Chenoweth?
I'd be supportive of, I like the, I want to restate that from my perspective, we're going to be having design discussions on this later anyways. So some of the detailed discussion that we're having is gonna come back to us. And it's partly because of that, that I have, I am fine with the commercial, the way it's set in the three-mile area plan. I would agree with Adam that we should consider changing that to five-acre in terms of being able to go back and look at it.
Okay, one moment.
I'm not saying for sure I'd vote yes on that. I'd like a discussion to understand the conflict.
I just wanted to make my note clear. Thank you. Councilor Menke?
I'm in favor of commercial, and I would vote for the plan as it stands tonight already. I think that there is a certain benefit in reducing the size. Are you saying by five acre, reduce it by five acres? Not down to five acres?
No, no, no.
The, so right now, how it's written in there is, anything ten acres or more would come to us for a plan overlay review. And if we reduce that number to five acres, so anything over five acres comes. But also, I would entertain a discussion if we wanted to shrink that from thirty-three net acres to thirty net acres, or twenty-five net acres, or whatever that discussion is to get, from what I've heard, other councilors on the dais on board with having commercial out there. I've heard that they're in favor of commercial, just not that much commercial. So how much commercial are you in favor of? And could that move the plan forward tonight and get us to voting on it versus sending it back to the advisory committee and hitting reset on the whole process?
Okay, thank you. Then I'm fine with the five acres, and I'm fine with considering reducing it, although I would really like to see it no more, less than thirty acres. I really think we're gonna need that.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Payne.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Adam about reducing the overlay reduction from ten acres to five acres. And I do think that there needs to be some commercial property out there, given that the current comprehensive plan map has us, has it as all-industrial right now with, I think, I believe I'm reading this right, that it's, everything east of Norton is industrial on the comprehensive plan map that stands current right now.
Okay, thank you. And Councilor Peralta?
I agree with Zach that probably the best approach would be to send this back. I do favor reducing the retail footprint. I think I'm less sold than my colleagues on the need for significant retail out there beyond neighborhood activity center-type retail. I hope most people caught most of that. Sorry for not speaking into the microphone more clearly.
Okay. Thank you. So I think we are at a good point on this commercial center conversation right now. We can move on to, and I would look around at this moment. Does any councilor have anything else to discuss on this specific point? Otherwise, can we move on to the next portion of the plan? Okay, thank you. So we're now gonna talk about transportation. And Councilor Gary, do you want to start that conversation for us?
Sure. My main one is just coming back to the future bike pedestrian overpass consideration and the line the city should continue to evaluate the bicycle and pedestrian, oh, in adoption process of the three-mile lane area plan, the city identified a future potential need for a bike pedestrian overpass at or Norton Avenue to facilitate a separated bike pedestrian crossing opportunity. This was not calculated as a need by the three-mile lane transportation analysis, and that more should be done to think about it if it's determined, warranted. I'd like the plan to include it as a need and understand that there was other considerations. And they ran calculations on the cost. I think it, I think, I'd like to see it in there as a need, but I, so my question is, is there a way to get it in there, or is this how it's gonna have to stay?
Well, you can certainly, as a policy decision, say that you want to have a pedestrian overpass there. That then puts the cost of that improvement into our transportation system plan. The question I would have for Bill is if the data doesn't show that it's needed or warranted, we can still charge SDCs to build it? Or would that be a general taxpayer cost?
So for SDCs to cover the cost, it would have to show that it was necessary to accommodate new, new demand that, you know, that would otherwise not be there. And if we could show that the demand was the result of the development that'd be served, that would pay those SDCs, then in fact, we could charge it under SDC. So I think it'd take a little more effort to find, find, you know, to determine whether or not SDCs could fund it or not.
So right now, the way, the reason why it was put in the plan as, let's continue to evaluate it, is the intention is it would be evaluated as part of the TSP when we do a larger transportation model for the whole city with that growth to 2041. But the, the numbers just weren't showing the need for it. So it's, unless, unless it's a policy decision by the city that we say, "We just want to fund it anyways, and we'll figure out how to pay for it in the future," that's where you can put that flag in the sand. It just, it's just not following to the normal course of need and funding for it.
So I understand that it could be tenuous at best to stake an argument on SDCs allowing for the funding of it. But if there were other methods of funding and it was included in the plan, it could be something that's built.
Yeah, you, I mean, if you have eight million dollars, you can build anything.
Right, but it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't require us to have it built, right? Is it, I guess, am I phrasing that right? If it's in here as a need, it doesn't require us to build it in a certain time. It could stay as a need, we could find funding for eventually.
Right. So what it, what it's saying is, if the need is warranted, so as we continue to, you know, presumably manage the system, which is what we're supposed to do every five years, by doing these data collections, and let's say in five years or 10 years, there's a need for the pedestrian overpass. The pedestrian overpass is in the 1996 Oregon Highway Corridor Refinement Plan as a future phased improvement. So it's in there, too. But if there's, if there's, you know, if the data shows it's needed, then it drops into our system of need, and then it goes into our funding system of, you know, paying for it. The concern, there's two concerns with it. One, if it's not shown as needed, then, you know, we're finding sources other than development to pay for it. So that's, you know, that's generally on the whole public. And then the second piece is, actually, sometimes those provide false bravado in terms of pedestrian bike safety because people aren't using overpasses if it's not necessary, right? If this makes sense, because you have to walk up, over, and down. And it's, and it's out of way generally. So if you feel that the traffic is such, there's a signal there, and the traffic is such that you can cross at the signal and not have to go up, down, out of way, then people are gonna try to cross at the signal. And that's where you create, you're creating safety conflicts as well. So those were the two concerns that the consultant had when this came up at the Planning Commission level.
Understood.
Thank you. Other councilors on transportation? Council President?
Heather, on page 246 of the PDF, there's a kind of a, I don't know, multiple description of different transportation projects and low and high-cost estimates. I get at the footnote of that page. It says, "ODOT, City of McMinnville, and private development haven't identified their roles or projections." But what's the, if you can speak to it, I mean, what's the possibility that these are ODOT-funded things? Or what's the possibility that this is the city signing up for this type of investment in that three-mile lane corridor from a transportation perspective in the couple of coming decades?
So what I think will happen is when we update our TSP to 2041, this will hit our capital improvement list one way or another, regardless of this three-mile lane area plan. And at that time, then, we're having a discussion of how is it funded? So what, what is warranted by growth? And then we put that into an SDC methodology. And then you decide if you want to have that high of a transportation SDC methodology. I am going to share with you right now, I think there's gonna be sticker shock in this community for our transportation capital improvement program when we update the TSP just in general across the whole city, including this area. And it's not unusual for communities this size to have a several-hundred-million-dollar TSP capital improvement program, but the SDCs reflect that. That's, that's the reality. So there's several different ways to fund transportation improvements. Some are your local construction, local street funds. If we don't have a lot of that, then you, and some of it's already dedicated to the Parkway, I believe. And then you have SDC collections, and then you have on state facilities, ODOT STIP, which is their sort of, their funding program twenty-five, 10, 15, 20 years down the road. So these, when we go through the McMinnville TSP update, that process will get into more refinement on these types of projects. And then as they hit our capital improvement project list, then we'll start looking at which ones are SDC-eligible, how much they're eligible, which ones are state-eligible, how much are they eligible, and which ones have gap funding needs. So we don't, we haven't done that much work on this list to get to that sort of refined level.
Understood. Thank you. There still is quite a bit of mention about a roundabout at 18 in Seris. And then there's also a couple little footnotes about a stoplight possibly? What, I guess what triggers that? Is that an ODOT-only decision? Or can we do anything in this plan level to really dictate that we don't want a roundabout there without it coming back before this body?
I think you could say the city's preference is not to have a roundabout. What will happen is ODOT's going to look at the project that's the safest and maintains the mobility of their system. And they have been deferring to roundabouts on some of these. So for instance, right now, they're planning and designing a roundabout for the Lafayette Highway intersection with Highway 18. But I spoke with ODOT, this was a, you had a concern about this when we brought it to you as a work session. So we had discussions with ODOT about it. And so they, they were willing to put into the document a signal or a roundabout, so that could be a future decision.
Okay.
But I think as, as a decision-making body, if you want to put language in here saying the city, the city council as a decision-making body would like, would prefer to see a signal there, we can certainly put that in there. ODOT's gonna do what's safest and what creates the, what maintains the mobility for the system, which is also what I think we want, so.
And then to the Airport Commission's concerns about street light height, because, you know, that'd be lit, I would imagine, when it gets fully redeveloped. That just defers to FAA rules, right? We don't need to put anything in there from a city.
Yeah, so when we get down to those types of standards and specs, we'll be going through a more refined process. I don't imagine the street light height's gonna be an issue because it's gonna be downlit. But yeah, we can certainly bring that to the Airport Commission if that's a concern and have that discussion. We'll be walking through. So the reality is, it's, the highway system is an ODOT facility and under their jurisdiction and standards. Our frontage roads, interestingly, are also in the ODOT right-of-way in some places and in city right-of-way in other places. It's very weird. And so it's not clear to me who has jurisdiction over that. Does ODOT have jurisdiction over the whole thing, even the city stuff? And then they would make decisions about that. Or if we have, the frontage roads will be our design jurisdiction. I don't know.
And then to loop back on the TSP and kind of that sticker shock dollar amount, is that similar to what Redmond went through when they did that Highway 97 realignment? Or was that a fully ODOT-funded project?
That was, oh my God, I gotta recall what that was. That was in our TSP. So there was, there was SDC's money that went into that. There was ODOT funds. We created an urban renewal district that paid for a lot of it, too.
Okay, thank you.
It was multi-funding sources.
Yeah, this is a big project.
And I think it was 110 total.
Okay.
Anyone else on transportation? Council Chenoweth?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I hesitate to ask this question because it belies my ignorance on this topic. But on SDCs, if I heard you correctly, are you saying that when we do this TSP plan, some of the stuff that's gonna get added to the SDCs, we're gonna have the choice of whether we want them in there or not? Am I-
No, so you, as a, as a body, one, adopt the plan with the list of projects in it. And then, two, you adopt the SDC methodology. So for instance, last time when we had a TSP plan update, we eliminated some projects as a decision process at the city council level. So some projects were not built, and we're seeing some of those issues as a result of that. And then also, the SDC methodology recommended a certain SDC, and the city council elected not to take the full SDC amount. That's a, that's a value decision of the decision-making body, and you have the opportunity to make that decision.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments on transportation? Okay. There, infrastructure. Both Councilor Gary and Council President Garvin stated they'd like to discuss infrastructure. Who would like to start?
Would, given across the river and many reasons cited for kind of changing this up as the infrastructure needs to put in, I understand that would come with development. But is this area ripe for the potential of an urban renewal district?
So, lack of facilities, lack of infrastructure is probably one of the more common levers that cities and counties use when they establish urban renewal districts. We believe, we actually can document in some cases, there's inadequate infrastructure for additional development. We know there's missing infrastructure. I think we need to do more research to sort of quantify that and, and make the case consistent with the urban renewal statutes. But I think lack of public improvements and infrastructure is pretty commonly a primary grounding for an urban renewal district to be established in this area. I think it's an area that's ripe for that tool. And I think, I think there's a lot of, you can't really quantify what the impact is gonna be because we don't know what development's going to occur out there and how quickly it will occur. But I think that an urban renewal district could provide an additional tool to fund infrastructure out there. Whether it would fully fund it or partially fund it, I couldn't say because we still need to, to complete that facilities' plan work. And the infrastructure needs will be at least partly driven by the kind of development and the intensity of development that occurs. I mean, we've got a better handle on what the transportation system needs are for the Highway 18 corridor, but other infrastructure's gonna be dependent on type and density of development, if you will. So I think it's a tool that's worthy of consideration.
I think that, then, the other parts are sort of my thoughts on the project as a whole through the lens of transportation. I think, given, or not transportation, infrastructure, the projects that we have that update methodologies on SDCs for transportation and stormwater and, you know, arguably all our other ones, Parks, and Parks, we're going, in the open spaces master plan, we're doing, we'll update the SDC methodology. All of which is needed infrastructure to accurately take care of and shepherd this area along. I think, I'd feel more comfortable if all those questions were answered and this development then fed into our ability to take care of this land prior to this moving forward wholesale. And I know that probably adds way more time, but I really think it's super important as this would go, to have urban renewal structures in place or answer the question of if we could do that out there to help fund this, to have the Parks SDCs methodology updated and passed to let all of this fund the great projects out here that we have coming down the pike, as well as the transportation, so that all this development could help fund that. And as well as, the other thing that we're working on with bringing city services up, this is a ton more of activity going on in the city that we're already having a hard time keeping up with and delivering service to across the board. And so I'd love to see some of those services upped and impacted and boosted prior to having to take on this and manage this in addition to all the other requirements of our city. So those are my main thoughts on the infrastructure piece.
And if I may, so an area plan's purpose is to help with the actual more refined planning of the public facility plan updates. Because if we say, this is what we want our future vision for this area to be for the next 20 years, and we're in public facility plan updates, then those updates can calculate based on that vision and bring it into play. So, for instance, and that's why we deliberately set it up where this is an area where we had the most vacant land within the city, where there would be the most impact. And so we wanted to do an area plan before we did these public facility plan updates, so we could understand how that vision would drive those public facility plan updates, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Council President?
Yeah, Heather, I noticed that John Dietz from Water and Light was on the Technical Advisory Committee, but I didn't see a lot of feedback from him in the plan. And I was curious if, how that had been explored as far as electrical grid capacity of water and light. I know water-wise, we're in really good shape, but electrical grid-wise, if there's heavy industrial users out there, you know, are they prepared to build a substation out there? What does that do for the redundancy of the system of the existing customers in Kingwood and the hospital and things of that nature?
Yeah, so he was on the advisory committee, and he's been watching this process. And, you know, he probably has concerns on a more micro level, but not on the macro level. I know there's been discussions of a substation out there. I think there's also been discussions of a water treatment facility out there. And we've had conversations about that, because that can happen either, here's the irony, utilities can happen on county's own land, as well as city's own land. So for instance, our wastewater treatment plant's not in the city. So we've had discussions about where's the best location for that moving forward, and he's looking at all those different opportunities. But I think that's always been part of his planning process, and that type of infrastructure support's going to be needed regardless, based on the current comp plan that's in play.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're to discuss housing. Counselor Menke, do you want to take us on that, please?
I feel the plan provides for much-needed housing in a lower price range with the use of different housing types that are now available in the McMinville development plans. I am hopeful for the possibility also of using inclusionary zoning in some of the development areas. This is a much-neglected area for basic amenities. And there is, well, that piece isn't in there. But I think housing is extremely important with this overall plan, and I just wanted to make a point of it.
Thank you. Any additional comments on housing? Thank you. City service capacity, it was touched upon already. Any additional comments, Counselor Geary? Counsel President?
I do have concerns about city service capacity out there, just because it is kind of on an island. So response times for any of our public safety, whether it be police or fire, will be not the best situation out there unless we invest in the city service fees, or city services. So that's just something to consider. If this does get developed, we will need to have more firefighters, more police officers, more public works on the road, so there's a can cost in this development.
Any additional comments on city services? Thank you. And Counselor Chenoweth, you wanted to discuss the overall vision.
I just wanted to get a feel for what everybody else is thinking, their overall vision, if it's different than what's in this packet.
So it's a question to council? So council?
Provoked a conversation and discussion about what our vision actually is for this area.
Okay. Thank you. So I'll go down the dais. Any counselor that would like to answer the question is, how does the plan align with your vision? And how does the plan align with the vision that you understand for the city of McMinville? Counselor Peralta, would you like to start?
Sure. I mean, as I said at the beginning, I'm generally in favor of the proposal with the concerns about, that I've already articulated about the retail.
Thank you, Counselor Payne.
Thank you. I feel like by and large, it's supported by the MAC Town Plan and being in the urban growth boundary. It kind of makes it ideal for this comprehensive plan, map plan change. I feel like, you know, a lot of the information and questions that I have can't be answered until we're a lot longer, or a lot more involved into the process, like facade and, you know, the number of dwellings that could be impacted or created by the type of housing that's being referenced in high-density residential. I'm still processing, I guess.
Thank you, Counselor Menke. I mean, I know you've said it twice.
One more time. I am fully in favor of this plan as it stands.
Thank you. Council President?
By and large, in favor of the plan, outside of the couple things I've mentioned already. But I would feel comfortable voting on it in some form or fashion tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Geary?
I think my comments and discussions on all the sub-bullets have answered that. I have nothing to add.
Okay. And Counselor Chenoweth?
Thank you for that exercise. I don't know that I got as much depth as I was hoping, but thank you for the exercise. I'm with Kelly Menke, or Counselor Menke. You know, my view of the plan is I could take it the way it exactly is written. And I am looking forward to kind of getting into the details when we start dealing with design standards. I'm looking forward. I believe we have an opportunity to put something forward that is a lasting legacy for our community. So I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. And the last topic that was brought up to have conversation around this evening was the environment and our natural resources. Would anybody like to continue that conversation? Counselor Geary, I'm sorry, I didn't make a note, but I believe it was you that brought it up.
Yeah, I don't think I have an additional, fully articulated question ready. I know there's some language about preservation of views and waterways and accesses. I think I just, I just think maybe in addition to the city's infrastructure, a natural resources inventory and protection plan prior to any additional development would ease my, ease my mind on further development as we just chew up undeveloped land and making sure we're protecting what makes those lands beautiful and not getting rid of them. So just another thought in that vein.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll jump in on that as well. I appreciate still the efforts that planning staff have made to protect tree groves and individual trees, but it's still not present in this plan. So I do kind of agree with Zach that I would feel more comfortable seeing those protections come into our code before we implement this, based on concerns that it would, it might actually weaken protections that we create that are forward-moving. So if we adopt stronger standards later, would the, would the standards that we add to this plan mitigate or somehow weaken those stronger standards? And I know Heather's spoken to it a few times, but that's my concern.
So this is guidance, and we are working on regulatory code. I am looking, so I'm looking at page 241 of the packet, which is where you have a list of policies. And it says, "The following policies shall guide development and future planning decisions in the three-mile-lane area." And there are policies, you know, policies are broader language. And shall is what Friends of Yamhill County recommended before it said, "are intended to." So this makes it a requirement. But public improvements and private developments shall strive to protect tree groves and mature individual trees. And then we need to write the regulatory framework to ensure that policy is enacted. What I don't see in this list of policies, this is what I was looking for, was the public safety services piece of it. And I don't know what that would look like in terms of a policy statement, but that could be something that you amend into this. And Bill and I would have to work on what that means, because it's hard to regulate. There shall be a substation for police and fire in this particular location. But we could look at a policy that looks at looking at those needs.
Could you expand on that a little bit more?
So that list of policies will sort of govern, it does two things. The list of policies does two things. One, it says right away that development needs to meet these policies. So that will be part of our process of review. It also creates policies that will govern the regulatory framework that we create in the, after this, in the implementation strategy. So you will have sort of a planned development overlay, or more than one maybe, that comes to you that has code standards, design and development standards in it that are reflecting these policies. My question is, I was looking at them to see, one, if there was enough in there from a policy standpoint to reflect, or just, you know, discussion you just started having about natural resource protection. And also, I was trying to figure out how to bring the public safety piece into it, because I don't recall that being part of this, and that's what I was looking to find. And I don't know how to regulate public safety services in a land use process. It's very difficult. Interestingly, we have to do that work when we're looking at UGB boundary line adjustments, but we don't do that work within the city stuff. So Bill and I could probably look at that, try to come up with some language.
As far as Counselor Geary and Peralta's mention of the tree groves and things like that, is that things we're capable of doing after this is adopted? Or is it things that have to be, we need that regulatory work done before we would vote on this plan?
Well, this is the discussion that Winterbrook brought to you in a work session that I wasn't able to participate in. But to protect tree groves, we need to have an inventory of the tree groves we want to protect. So if we're protecting a tree grove specifically, so let's say it's the oaks behind the Evergreen museums, then we have an inventory that says, "We're protecting those tree groves." And so development shall not impact those. We have to do something called an easy analysis to be able to protect them in full, because you're taking away development rights for that land. We can have policies that say things like, you know, "All trees over, larger than nine inches in diameter need to go through a tree survey," and they need to determine why they need to remove those trees for development, dah 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 dah. And we do that right now. But there's not a lot of meat behind that, because if you need to build something and the tree's right there, and there's no other way to build it, it's removed.
Was that, was that the current process that was in place when you look at the trees that were cleared out for Baker Creek North and Oak Ridge expansion? I don't remember the name of that subdivision, but...
Yeah, that was the process. And so, and there's two parts to that process. So like the oak trees for Baker Creek North that were on the street that came down. The way our code is written, we ask for an, so if a developer comes in and says, "We're going to take that down because, one, it's dead, or if we construct around it, it's going to destabilize it, and it needs to come down, it's a public safety issue," we ask for an arborist report. That's what happened with those oak trees. With the other ones, like Oak Ridge Meadow, where they took down a lot of trees right where the development's going to occur, we look at every house site and talk to them about, "Why do you need to remove this tree in the corner versus this tree here?" That type of thing. But we can't prevent total development of that site from occurring by protecting the trees without doing this inventory easy analysis. That works underway. I mean, we've gotten that inventory done. We're working on the easy analysis. We don't have clarity on how far we want to go with that inventory and the protection. But that's regulatory work that would apply to the whole city.
And the, so just to clarify, the Baker Creek North trees that came down, they came down due to an arborist, certified arborist health report that said, "These aren't going to make it if..."
The ones that people really got upset about that were there, that were right there by the street. If you recall, we had to widen the street. It wasn't improved. We had to widen it, put in the sidewalks and stuff like that. And yes, I wanted to keep those and was arguing internally that we needed to figure out how to keep them. But the arborist report came back and said, "To build the street, you're going to destabilize these, and they'll be a public safety hazard."
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Additional questions, comments, and discussion? Okay. So we're getting to the point where we can entertain a motion here. If you want to go to page 204 of your packet, that's where the options for moving forward are. I will attempt to summarize, just to make sure that we're all, our thinking is kind of all in alignment in terms of we understand where the things that have come up and additionally any changes that council may or may not be suggesting. And if we could just kind of make sure we're all on the same page and then entertain a motion after that, that would be great. So in regards to the overall plan, I generally hear consensus on moving the plan forward, not unanimously, but the overwhelming portion of the council, I think, has said they would like to move the plan forward. In regards to the commercial district, what I have here is that four of the six of you would prefer to move forward without this going back to Citizens Advisory Committee, but with a reduction regarding the planned development overlay from 10 acres down to five acres. And then I heard as well, the possibility of adding into our policies something regarding public safety, but I don't have a lot of clarity, and I don't think that there is a lot of clarity on exactly what language we could include at this time. And I've also heard that we would like, that some members of council might want stronger environmental protection language in the policy. Would you all generally agree that that is kind of, your understanding of where we are as a body right now, whether or not, you know, you're in the majority of that or not?
The only addition that I didn't hear was that, I think a few people at least, said that they were open to also reducing the retail footprint in that area.
I heard that people were open to that. I did not hear that that was a desire to do at this time without additional data. So let me just informally here kind of poll the council. So, let me just informally here kind of poll the council. My goal, of course, is to get the clearest direction back to our staff as possible going forward. So, Counselor Peralta, you would generally, well, I'll let you speak. What would you generally like to do with the overall retail footprint?
I think we should reduce the retail footprint. And for that reason, I think we should still send it back for further review rather than passing it tonight.
Okay.
Just to clarify, so the language that's in the plan right now says 40 to 60 acres for the mixed-use town center. So, an amendment to that would be, you know, either a different acreage amount or not to exceed this much buildable acreage.
My concern about making that change at this time is that we don't yet have the data on...
What's the sweet spot?
Right. So, that's why I think we ought to delay.
Can we, can we just say that we want this addressed at a later point and bring it back? But we're okay with the, maybe say 30 to 60 acres or whatever?
Well, so, I think, so I brought up what's in the plan because that's the language in the plan. So, that's what you would amend. And the question would be, do you actually need an acreage in there at this point? That's one question.
Well, yeah, do we?
Another question would be not to exceed a certain acreage. I don't know. But you do have language in the plan right now that says 40 to 60 acres. That's the nomenclature that's in there right now.
And at 40 acres, that's 33 net acres?
Yeah. Well, we couldn't determine the public right-of-way size because of, we didn't know what the configuration would be. And we're, I mean, if it's all a thin Band-Aid along the frontage, a lot of it's public, a lot of it's frontage road. If it's deep, it's different, so.
I understand that. I guess what bothers me is everybody thinks it's 60 acres of commercial and it isn't really. It's 60 acres or it's some amount of acreage for the commercial and some amount of acreage for the frontage road. To lump them together is rather...
Right. And so, that's, and that's why I'm saying... So, with the plan language, that language has been problematic in the plan to begin with because it originally started off as just describing the 90-acre site with a mixed-use town center. And so, some people took that as it was a 90-acre site. So, and there are other places in the plan that said 40, 60 acres. So, we just tried to clarify that from the get-go that was 40, 60 across the board. That's been problematic though because that's a range and people get up to the large range of that and think that it's a 60-acre commercial site. So, if your concern is that it's just a net 33 buildable acres, we can change that language to that. If your concern is you would like to see it less, then we could change it to less. I'm hearing that, let's not change it without having data to support it to go where we want to go. But there is the opportunity for you as a decision-making body to say, "This language in the plan, we want to change specifically." Does that size?
Say we landed at a number of 33 net acres, which is the lower side of that range. What does an applicant in a quasi-judicial setting have to do to exceed that 33? Like, is there, they can still go above that through meeting goal 1.5 or whatever goal that is in the land use process?
Yeah. So, they can, you're saying as a vision, this is what we'd like to see. They still have the right to come in and request the comp plan map amendment and zone map amendment that's larger than that. And what they have to show, so for the comp plan map amendment, that's a policy decision of the city. So, you have some latitude there and the sandbox in which you're working is larger. All you have to make sure is that you're not taking away from an existing land use classification where you have a minimum amount of land to meet your future needs. So, let's pretend our EOA showed that we had exactly enough industrial land, we had 40 acres more of industrial land, right? And someone wanted to come in and rezone 60 of it. Then that land supply for industrial land is going below our stated need. We can't go below the minimum standard. You can have more of a particular land use than what's in your EOA. You just can't go, you can't make a decision to go below the need. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Thank you.
Counselor Payne, do you mind addressing this question from Counselor Peralta about your interest in trying to reduce the overall footprint of commercial?
I don't have any interest in reducing the overall footprint of commercial. I think there's remaining 140 to 160 acres of industrial out there and that seems like a sufficient ratio.
Okay. Counselor Geary? You don't want to say it again. Okay. Okay, well, I think we are at the portion of the evening where we can entertain a motion. Counselor Chenoweth?
So, Mayor, can I make some clarifying statements?
Please, yes.
So, you talked about, so we'll be looking at amendments in the plan document to bring to you based on this discussion, it sounds like. The discussion of the reduction of the 10, so the, what the plan policy says on page 250 of your document, it's in the implementation recommendations. And so, it says, "Require future development to be consistent with the design elements of three-mile-lane area plan." And then it says, "require mixed-use, commercial, or industrial development proposals over 10 acres to be subject to planned development overlay." So, that's the overlay we put together. And planning commission approvals, that means the site plan goes to planning commission. My question to you is, do you want to reduce it for all three of those elements, mixed-use, commercial, and industrial, to five acres? And do you still want it to just go to the planning commission or do you want it to come up to city council? I just want to make sure it's clear what we're amending.
Sure. Counselor Chenoweth, go ahead.
Well, first, I'd like to say, I would be totally amiable to changing it from 40 to 60 acres to 33 buildable. We didn't get to me on that question. And if we want to do that to make it more clear to everybody what the intent is, I'm up for that change if that would help the process. In terms of what you just asked, Heather, from my perspective, I wouldn't want to put that limitation on the industrial. I wouldn't want to have to send every five acres' worth of industrial development over to the planning commission.
No, I think we only want it for the commercial piece.
And maybe mixed-use.
And the what?
Maybe mixed-use potentially. I'll have to tease that out. What would be...
Will the mixed-use be part of the commercial development?
No. So, you have mixed-use, you have two mixed-use sites. Those are the other two sites where there's comprehensive plan map amendments required where you, and they're on the frontage roads more or less. So, where the intention is you have ground floor, commercial, and high-density residential.
Okay. Then on the mixed-use too, I guess.
Yeah, I guess I'd second Kelly that mixed-use and commercial come up to city council. My clarifying question with that would be if a future body determined that that was too much of a heavy lift, could they amend that to put it back down on just planned?
Yeah. So, what we're going to do is write a overlay district for this area. That language will be in the code. So, it'd be like the downtown overlay district that's in our code that will require that. You can always amend that. You can always, we'll have to bring this through to you anyways in the future to write the overlay district. I think you can still amend it. We'd be able to create findings, Bill, if they wanted to say, "We don't want mixed-use to be five acres. We want that to be 10 and just the commercial to be five."
You know, it's, I think we can do that in the findings and, you know, make it clear that there's some flexibility there.
And then what I heard is you want it to come to city council. So, this means all the site plans for anything that's five acres or more will come to city council for final approval through a planning commission, public hearing process, city council.
Seems like a lot.
Under 120-day clock, correct?
What's that?
With 120-day clock?
Yes.
Okay.
I know it seems like a lot, but this is a good way to ensure that the vision that we want for that area occurs. And it helps to put in a safeguard that I think some are very concerned about.
We'll tell you, it's not, I mean, McMinnville, you have a lot of, you have 250 planned development in this community that have, I don't know how many of them have embedded site plans in them, but there's a lot. And to amend those, they come to US City Council. You see us bringing you stuff saying, "This was done in 1979 and now we want to add this." So, it's not an unusual practice here, I guess is what I'm saying.
Okay. Let's let it stand. I guess if we can amend it, it's not a big deal.
So, five acres for mixed-use and commercial is what I'm hearing?
That's what I'm hearing.
Yep.
As well?
Yes.
Okay. Are there other things that we should be looking to get some clear policy? I'm looking through your list of recommendations and there's a number of things that say, "Wait for policy direction," but some of those never came up in council discussion as something that council even was interested.
The other one I've heard a couple of you talk to me about and I've heard the community talk about as well is the discussion of most of the industrial land is M2. That is east of Norton Avenue on the south side. And so, the discussion is, would we want to look at that as a recommendation? So, this would be your implementation strategy again to look at a future recommendation to rezone that to either M1 or ML.
So, this is item number three. If you go to page 257 in your packet, item number three, rezone M2 land to ML. Give the council a moment.
And I would just say, look at rezoning it to remove heavy industrial. I don't know if ML or M1's the best zone. I think you need to review that to make sure you're allowing enough flexibility so you can achieve what you want to achieve out there and just keep the hazardous conflicting uses away.
Yeah. So, one of the hesitations that I think I am hearing tonight is that the council has a desire to move forward and a desire to get some additional clarity. And so, any suggestions on navigating that would be great.
So, these are policies, right? So, you're providing policies that say, "Next step, you staff, bring back this, bring back this in code form." And then you'll be looking at the more detailed effects of that? Well, actually, we'll go through planning commission up to you. There'll be another process, right? And it will be, it will be the regulatory stuff, the dirty, the down-and-dirty stuff in terms of the code. And so, but putting it into the policy is putting a flag in the sand saying, "This is the implementation that we want to move forward with."
So, we do not need to be concerned about specific policy language, though?
No. So, I think, I would suggest you let Bill and I sort of hear what you would like to achieve and then we'll put together amended language in the plan and ordinance and findings and bring that back to you. And you have one last look at that amended language in the plan, the ordinance and the findings for when you take action.
So, just to make sure I understand, the path forward would be, instead of us making a motion tonight on this and with amendments that are, that we are trying to decide upon from the dais, that we, and without, if the council's not interested as a whole in sending this or as a majority in sending it back to the Citizens Advisory Committee, that we could send it back to staff to layer in this additional policy language and fine-tune some things before a vote? Or would you still want a vote this evening?
Your vote is a vote for direction. You're not actually adopting an ordinance tonight.
Got it. Right. Okay.
So, what we're going to do is you will have a future action item at a future meeting adopting an ordinance, which will have the plan you're adopting with all the amended language and then a findings document associated with that. So, what I'm saying is based on what we have heard as your concerns that you would like to amend in the plan language, we would bring back that plan document, much like the one we have tonight, which will have sort of the reds and stuff so you can see the changes, and share with you those, that suggested change language in the plan document. Also have an ordinance to adopt it with findings. And that's when you take action.
Thank you.
In terms of tonight, for the motion for direction, I'm going to leave that to Bill and Jeff, how you want to move that forward. I'm not, I don't know if you need a motion necessarily for direction or if you would like to get a motion on that. Let's get them. We're looking at you, Bill.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. I didn't want to jump in where, and I've seen cities handle this kind of situation in a variety of different ways. You know, one is provide general direction and, you know, Heather and I push back on certain things where we don't think there's any clarity. You know, typically, that works best when you have consensus. Not, you know, there are some things where it seems like there's consensus. There's also some things where there may not be consensus. And so, then the vote may be helpful in terms of giving us what we need to bring back to you, what you want to see. And, you know, some of what you had done, Mayor, in terms of tallying, here's where I hear the majority going, is extremely helpful. Don't necessarily need a vote if, you know, I'm looking at Heather at this one because she's the one who's going to do the laboring or bringing back findings on this and making sure that she understands the direction from the council where they want to go. So, it's really, how official do you want to make this direction to staff? Because, you know, what you're doing now is saying, Heather and Bill, draft up these, you know, you've got the plan, hear the changes we want to see, and bring that back to us. Ultimately, it's when that comes back to you that you'll have the official vote saying, "This ordinance is now adopted and these are the planned policies that we have, you know, these are the changes we're making to our comprehensive plan."
Okay. So, I'm going to recap then one more time the direction I understood, Counselor Chenoweth.
Before you do that, I just want to say, I concur with what Heather just brought to the table that we didn't discuss, that we need to specify that we don't want heavy industrial out there.
Perfect. Wait for my recap. So, what I am generally hearing then is the council would like to give direction to staff to bring this back with refined language specific to reducing the planned development overlay from 10 acres to five acres in two of the three sections. That council would like to bring back additional policy language regarding protection of our environment and natural resources. Council would like additional clarity. And I know we did not poll on this, so if somebody, you know, if I'm out of turn, I'm sure I have trouble speaking up. So, some additional language, if possible, around city services and especially public safety and how that will dictate development. And I also hear clarity around the language over the total built environment, the commercial environment, that the, clarifying the language that currently says 40 to 60 acres, that refining that language for greater specificity and clarity, both for the community and council, would be desirable. And lastly, while we did not have heavy discussion of it, that we would want clarity on the M2 land as the plan does, as it's written, since the innovation campus does not contemplate heavy industrial uses, that we would want clarity or refinement there. And have I missed something or misspoken generally? I understand not everybody agrees with all of those things. But yes, Counselor Geary?
Both for you and staff, would this be an appropriate time to explore the urban renewal Insofar as bringing more information back, because I'd love to hear more about how that would work or what that would or wouldn't do and when we could phase it in.
So, for this dialogue, the question would be, do you want to embed a policy in this three-mile-lane-area plan of the city either exploring an urban renewal district or implementing one? Or you could just say, you know, for a future work session, I want to understand better what an urban renewal district would look like in this particular area or any other area, right? And the process for putting it together and what it could do.
Yeah. I'd love to learn more, but that will hold up my ability to... Yeah, I'd love to learn more, but that will hold up my ability to move this forward and support it. So both, from my perspective. So I'd like to, I'd like to set up the opportunity to learn more, but I also don't feel comfortable moving the plan forward without learning more about that, from my perspective.
Okay. I believe I'm ready to entertain a motion.
Yeah.
No?
My question was, if you talked about landing on a net buildable commercial acreage, if we wanted to identify what that net number was?
So the council, the question to council right now is, do we want to give staff the direction to bring back clarity around the buildable acreage of commercial? Or do we want to try to come up with numbers at this point to give to staff? I always hesitate for us to give that type of specificity to staff, especially since we don't have the research that, or the data in front of us that Councilor Peralta brought up before. We don't, I don't know that we, as a body, have a, have the information in front of us to, to make a referral.
You could write language that says not to exceed 33 net buildable acres, and then continue to massage that as, you know, as applications come in to you, you could, you could see what the impact of those apps. So when an application comes to you for comprehensive plan map amendment, zone map amendment, they're going to bring with them, they have to bring with them, a traffic impact analysis respective of those overall acres in terms of the impact to the system.
Is that an amenable direction?
Works for me. At least it specifies.
It's an improvement.
Yeah, I mean, my perspective on this is, is that vagary, although it wasn't intended to be a vagary, it became a hangup. So if we take that out of there and make it more specific, it, now it's no longer, we can't have the argument, well, you're saying 33 acres, but really, you're looking at 40 to 60, right? That takes that kind of out of the discussion point, and I think that helps everybody to have a clear understanding.
Okay, so, yes, the additional amendment, or the additional request would be to include language that says not to exceed 33 buildable acres. I'd like to ask for a motion to be made, please.
I so move, as it has been discussed.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilor Manke to, and a second by Councilor Chenoweth. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Heather wants to ask a question.
I had a clarifying question, but you've made your vote.
Everybody's voted? I didn't vote.
I don't know, but my clarifying question was, there's a difference between 33 buildable acres and 33 net buildable acres. The net is minus the public right away.
Net is?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Wasn't clear to me what your motion was.
Net.
Kelly, do you want to clarify what your motion was?
I think it's net.
I'll second net.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
I'm sorry, I want to clarify, is this just voting on that amendment, or is it the underlying?
So I think we are, we didn't get through the first vote in its entirety, not all of the council voted, so we, the, I believe we are, well, I don't believe, we are now voting on the first motion, but the language of that motion was clarified. So the, the motion as I understand it is to approve with the reduction of 10 acres to 5 acres of plan development overlay, to include the language not to exceed 33 net buildable acres, to bring back policy language related to city services and specifically public safety, to bring back refined language regarding protections for our environment and natural resources. That is what I under, I believe I got all the points that time, and that is...
There was some discussion about the change.
Oh, and the M2.
From M2 to a less, less industrial use.
Yes, and, and the, and the clarifying, limiting the heavy industrial uses in, on the M2, moving off of M2 to potentially ML or M1. Okay. Do I have a motion?
Okay, so what she said, I make a motion, and that means the 33 net acres.
A second.
Motion by Councilor Manke, a second by Councilor Chenoweth. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And all those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
And do I have any abstentions? Or, Councilor Gary, I did not hear your vote.
I...
Okay, thank you. So the motion passes five to one, and we will now consider the second reading of ordinance number 5123. We'll call on our finance director, Jennifer Quayar, to present.
So, good evening. What you have before you is the ordinance establishing a city services charge. It was, there was a, a public hearing at your previous council meeting, and there has been, actually, one more piece of public comment that has come in in the meantime, which has been circulated to you all via email this evening, and we will include it in the public So you're now at the second reading of the ordinance. If there are any questions or refreshers on what this does, I'm, I'm happy to talk more or field questions. What, what would be of help?
Does any councillor have any question on city service charge at this point, or discussion to be had?
Can we vote?
Yep, we can vote.
I would like to make a comment. I don't have any questions.
Okay, Councilor Chenoweth?
I just would like to say, and I know I've said it repeatedly, but I just want to make it very clear that I do oppose what we're doing. I think we're being tone deaf to the current situation facing our residents in this community. Between inflation and gas prices, we, and Michelle Pierce, I think, I hope I pronounced her name correctly,'s letter covered some of my great concerns, and, greatest concerns, and, and then added the bonus of hitting the one thing that I think is most important, which is if we're going to ask for money, or get money from our constituents, we should ask their permission to get that money. So I just want to go on record again saying, I think that at this time, this is, this is not the right approach. The right approach is the hard approach, and that would have been to go ahead and use the money that we were going to use out of ARPA, and then spend the time between now and the next budget cycle, going to the voters and making the case that we have a budgetary crisis, we need more income, and this is what we need. That's the way we should have done this. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, councillor. Any additional comments?
I would just say that I think voters sent us here to make these kinds of decisions, and putting this particular $13 a month, I think, would have destabilized the fire districting. And I think that's got to be our most important thing going forward, stabilizing the current budget, and moving forward with a vote that can pass in the fire district, which wouldn't be possible.
Okay, councillor, council president?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of loop around, and Chris, definitely understand your points, and as well as Sal. You know, this has been a long process to where we got here, and I think we, as a body, have explored many avenues to raise revenues for the city, and I feel like we're at the 13th hour, we're already in the current year's budget process. There's been a tremendous amount of staff time, not only in this revenue stream, but in exploring all the revenue streams that we started with our budget committee over a year ago. And so, voting on this tonight, and the way I'm going to vote on this doesn't come lightly. I definitely hear what you're saying, Chris, or Councilor Chenoweth, but I think more important than the vote tonight is that we look at this holistically, as far as what we're asking for the taxpayers with the fire district moving forward, and what, and how we're going to bring that $1.52 taxing authority back online to the citizens of McMinnville, and make sure that we, we take this revenue source into account when we're discussing that $1.52 going forward, because this isn't the most equitable way to derive money from our citizens. And so I think we need to make sure we keep that front of mind when we're looking at that $1.52 coming back online. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Chenoweth?
I just, I have to say, I agree, we're here to make tough decisions, Councilor Peralta, but the outpouring from constituents has been pretty consistent on where they're at with this. And it, and it doesn't matter from what, what sector of the community you talk to, they're all, their consistent message is, this is not the way to do it.
This is not true. We've had a lot of people come into the chamber.
Please don't interrupt me.
Councillors, gentlemen, please, first of all, I'd ask you to remember to direct your comments to me as opposed to each other, and, and we will be sure to get everybody the time they need to discuss this evening. So, Councilor Chenoweth, if you would direct your comments at me, and please finish any additional comments you have.
Sure, fair enough. And I apologize for having done so, aimed those, those comments directly at Councilor Peralta. I do understand, Mayor, that we are here to make very difficult decisions. The, the community has been consistent in their voice. They have made it very clear where they stand from, and it's across the spectrum of ideology, has made it clear where they stand. This is a regressive tax. This is not the place to be doing it. This is not the way to be doing it, and it's not even the approach to do it. So I appreciate the comments. The vote's going to go where it's going to go, so I'm not going to continue to argue it. I just wanted to address that comment.
Thank you. And, Councilor Peralta?
Yes, my only comment was, it would be that you voted on a budget that depends on this tax, Chris, and without...
Let me, please, Councilor Peralta.
Our council voted on a tax that, I mean, on a budget that included this funding. And without this funding, there is no budget that, that we've agreed to. And, and at the time, I recall that every member of, of the board said that we agreed with the framework, and you're, and one councillor objected simply to the fact that this wasn't put to a vote. And I, it was explained very clearly that we could not get the revenue that we needed in the current, this biennium, this annual cycle, unless we moved forward in the way that we are. And so I'm not willing to see staffing cuts, I'm not willing to see services lost, and, and this gives us an opportunity to stabilize a city's budget going forward. Between this and the fire district, we will have put this city for the first time in decades on a firm and stable financial path, and I'm proud of the work that we're doing.
Thank you, Councilor Peralta. I would prefer not to have a back and forth at this point. Do you have a new, a new point to make, Councilor Chenoweth?
Well, I just think we need to have, the original budget vote that I voted on, Mayor, was to have ARPA dollars fill this hole. That was what we agreed to as a council. This came back after the fact, and switched from ARPA dollars filling that hole to tax, to a tax on our citizens filling that hole. That was not something I ever agreed to, so I just want the record clear.
Thank you. Thank you all for your discussion. I know that this has been difficult, particularly difficult, and, and there are a lot of rights, and there are, there are things we've heard, the discussion around this being a regressive tax. There are portions of this tax that are regressive, there is no doubt. And we have strived to implement equity measures, and importantly, to implement methodologies so that the, those equity measures can be expanded. And the other portion of that, and something that I keep top of mind because a, is, is in all decision-making, is the question that we are supposed to be asking ourselves before any vote, which is, who is, who is most affected by this vote? Who is most negatively impacted by this vote? And you can interpret that in many ways, but in our budget committee cycles, we did hear testimony, we heard repeated testimony, that the lack of city services is what harms our citizens the most. And I, I brought this, this mailer that every household got that was sent out by our library. Our library didn't pay for this directly. It was, actually, it says on the front, this was paid for by the Library Foundation and Recology. And at our last council meeting, we were told that we, we have just recently reopened our library on Sundays. And on the back of this, this talks about some of the things that our library provides. Obviously, books, audiobooks, and movies, puzzles and games, but then it goes on, and at the bottom, it talks about teen programs, and storytimes, and one-on-one tech help. And if you've gone through our library, and if you've talked to our librarians, you know that especially at tax time, and those who can't afford financial services, spend a lot of time in the library filing their taxes, and rely on our librarians, not for tax advice, of course, but for guidance in how to use that technology, and how to get that work done. And when we are talking about teen programs, and we are looking at our city, and when we are thinking about parents and single fam, single parent households, and folks that are working Monday through Friday, and when we do not have simple ser, not simple, complex, but these types of services available, I do believe that this harms our community in a terrible way. And, and I want to say that I would not have worked to move this forward if I felt that this did more harm than good, than, more harm than good for those who have the most financial struggle in our city. And I do think the city services that we provide, our core services, those are essential to a healthy and vibrant community. So thank you, and thank you, everybody, for your comments on this. And we will now have the city attorney read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number 5123, an ordinance authorizing a city services charge and declaring an emergency.
I will now ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number 5123.
All moved.
I have a motion from Councilor Gary, and a...
Second.
Second from Councilor Manke. I would now ask our city recorder, Claudia Sisneros, to poll the council.
Councilor Gary?
Aye.
Councilor Chenoweth?
Nay.
Councilor Manke?
Aye.
Councilor Peralta?
Aye.
Councilor Payne?
Nay.
Council President Garvin?
Well, is this at $13, or do we not determine the dollar amount yet?
You, you will be having to pass a resolution that actually adopts the amount of the fee and the breakdown on the fee. This, this ordinance enables you to then take the next step to adopt a fee ordinance.
Aye.
Thank you. The ordinance number 5123 is adopted by a vote of five to one, I believe.
Five to two.
No, five to two. Four to two. Sorry.
First try.
Okay, I'll now adjourn this meeting at 10:31 PM.